All right, please stand for the bench. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you all for attending today. If I'm doing right now, you would all please turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. It would be greatly appreciated. Right, to this meeting, we had an executive session to discuss personnel issues, and at this time, we'll move on to roll call.
Mr. Punti.
Here.
Mrs. Eka.
Here.
Ms. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Moretti.
Here.
Mrs. Polovich.
Yeah.
Mr. Pauli. Mrs.
We got you.
This is Renaldi.
Here.
Ms. Arno.
Here.
Mr. Polino.
Here.
Nine.
All right, you say cue. At this time, we'll open the floor to any audience comments concerning any of the agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move on. At this point, we'll turn things over to our superintendent, Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Polino. We have with us this evening, Mr. Steve Niedelberger. He is the auditor, and he will be presenting the financial statements from six thirty two thousand twenty-four. Welcome. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to take a few moments of your time to go over the statements for the past year, and if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask those, especially at the end of the brief presentation. If you have your audit reports with you, I'll refer to a few page numbers throughout the presentation. The first thing I just want to point out is after the table of contents, the first letter, it's the independent auditor's report. This is what we contribute to the audit, and that letter was a unqualified opinion we were able to provide. Unqualified means there was no qualifications on the opinion. That's the highest level opinion you could receive on your financial statements. That's also known as a clean audit opinion. So that's what the school district strives for, and that's what we are able to provide for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We'll just take a few moments to look at a few of the key exhibits that show some of your funds on the budgetary basis by which you budget. So if you want to flip to page seventeen, this is exhibit three. It's the balance sheet for the governmental funds. On page seventeen, you'll see the first column is the general fund. That is the main operating fund of the district. At June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, total assets were nineteen point eight million. While you had total liabilities and deferred inflows to resources of about nine point seven million, this resulted in your fund balance being slightly over ten million, of which eight point seven million was assigned, while a small amount, ten thousand six sixty-five, was non-spendable relating to the prepaid expenditures. This resulted in your unassigned fund balance at about one point three million. While we're on this page, two other funds, the first one there, the capital reserve, you see you had about ten point nine million in assets. You had a little over two hundred thousand liabilities, which resulted in your committed fund balance of ten point seven million. And the final column there, it says non-major funds. Under the reporting standards, the capital projects fund did not meet a major fund status, so we had to classify as non-major. You'll see that you had assets of one point eight million, liabilities of about a hundred fifty thousand, which resulted in your fund balance, your committed fund balance, at about one point six. While we're talking about your main funds, the governmental funds, we can flip forward about three pages to page twenty. On page twenty, it's exhibit five. This is your revenues, expenditures, and other changes in fund balance for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. The columns are the same. The first column, the general fund, you'll see the total revenues of twenty-six point five million, while your expenditures were twenty-four point six, and you had to transfer out to your capital reserve fund of one point five million, which resulted in a three hundred sixty-five thousand dollar increase in fund balance for the general fund during the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Capital reserve, you'll see your interest earnings of three hundred fifty thousand. You had expenditures of about two point two million. You had that money coming in from the general fund of about one point five million. This resulted in total activity in the capital reserve fund of a decrease of four hundred thirty-nine thousand in your fund balance. And finally, the non-major fund column, that's your capital projects fund, you'll see you just had interest earnings of a little over ninety-one thousand, which increased your fund balance by that amount. Just a couple other fund types. If you flip forward to exhibit eight, which is actually on page twenty-four. This is the proprietary fund of the district. This is your food service fund. Really just wanted to point out three lines from the bottom on page twenty-four, that you had a positive increase in your net position of about thirty-seven thousand for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The final fund type is exhibit ten, which is on page twenty-seven. These are the fiduciary funds of the school district. There's two fiduciary fund types. The first one is a trust-type fund that had about forty-one thousand in assets and six thousand in liabilities. And the other type is the custodial fund, which is the student activity monies. And the student activities had over sixty-two thousand a year in the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. That's just a brief look at the exhibits to these financial statements. There's a number of footnotes supporting these exhibits. Only one footnote I want to draw your attention to on page forty-one. Page forty-one is the long-term debt footnote. You'll see the first line on the long-term debt footnote is your general obligation bonds. You can see that you paid down over one point six million during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and your bonds outstanding at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four were twenty-one, slightly over twenty-one million dollars. Just a couple more items to point out on the report. The RSI required supplementary information gives a detailed budget actual line item look at the general fund begins on page fifty-nine. Just a couple of things over to seven or eight pages that I want to point out. Actually, on page sixty, halfway through the page, you'll see the total revenues line. You budgeted twenty-four point six million in revenue, and the district actually had twenty-six point five in revenue for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This is a positive variance with fund, with balance for your budget of revenues by one point eight million. So that was a positive thing. You took in more revenues than you anticipated. If you go to the bottom of page sixty-five, you'll see total expenditures. Even though you took in one point eight million more in total actual revenues versus budgeted revenues, and some of that had to do with the Essers money, ARPESR money that was still being used. The last line there, you'll see that your total expenditures were only eleven thousand one hundred thirty dollars over the budgeted expenditures. So your revenues up one point eight million, expenditures, you just spent an extra eleven thousand, and that's due to the federal expenditures being higher than when budgeted. So that shows strong fiscal management. It'll be summarized on the next page, on page sixty-six. You'll see, keep in mind that there was one point five million that was transferred out of the general fund to the capital reserve fund. So you'll see you budgeted a break-even fund balance, three lines from the bottom on page sixty-six, but you actually added to your fund balance three hundred sixty-five thousand because of the one point eight million revenues exceeding the budgeted revenues. The final thing I want to talk about in this report, there's not really a specific page number you have to go to. It's really about the last ten or eleven pages of the report. It's the single audit section. Anytime a school district has seven hundred fifty thousand or more of federal expenditures, we have to perform a single audit. You guys had about one point seven million in federal expenditures in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So we had to test the education stabilization fund, and there's two letters in that section. The first letter is another opinion letter. It is an opinion on your federal expenditures, and I'm pleased to say that was also unqualified opinion, which is known as a clean audit opinion, on how you spent your federal expenditures per the federal guidelines. And furthermore, with the single audit section, you also have to provide a letter on the internal controls, which is the second letter, and in there, we didn't notice any weaknesses in the internal controls of the school districts' federal expenditures that had to be reported. So that's sort of what that last section really talks about and what's going on there. So I know that's a lot of bouncing around and a lot of numbers and different categories and stuff, and you might have had to report, I think it was issued middle of February, had to report for a while now, but I wanted to see if anybody had any questions or anything about maybe something I said or something that they've seen in the report.
So we could say that Dr. Raj is doing a pretty good job.
Yes, as far as where the district stands with many of your key financial indicators, the district's in a good position, and the operations here, I'm pleased to say that it's a very good audit to perform. You have a good staff, obviously headed by your business manager. But you guys have a good working office there, and you know, there's a lot that goes into this. You see a bunch of numbers, but you know, you have to have your records and balance and, you know, proper procedures in place to get to this point, and you guys do have that.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean Burger, thank you very much for joining us this evening. We certainly appreciate your time, and again, congratulations to Dr. Raj Kapal and her team. We appreciate all that you do. Thank you. And thank you, and if anybody does have any further questions, if they could just forward them to her, and she'll get in contact, and I'd be glad at a further, at a later point to further discuss anything. Thank you. Thank you very much. Be safe. Next, we have Mr. Anthony Kanzian to talk about the Colfax demolition project.
Good evening. So I'm sure as everybody has noticed, the progress, the building is officially brown, one hundred percent demolished. There's still a small amount of foundations, I believe, he's trying to crush through and break up, but for all purposes, the demolition is complete, and he's in fact doing operations. As I mentioned last time, he's a couple weeks behind schedule due to, you know, weather and the trouble getting through some of his foundations. So I prepared and recommend a middle-cost change order to extend this contract, which I believe is on the agenda today. That extends the contract to June sixth, I believe. Substantial completion is supposed to be today. So on other inspection news, the D E P has inspected the site for erosion and sedimentation and found no violations currently. I believe they're supposed to come out a couple of times as he's backfilling and doing his ready-up operations. That's where we are. Hopefully, by next meeting, we'll be close to finished.
Why would you compare that concrete foundations compared to what you see today?
It's, the one on the west side, I believe, was.
It's a chore. What are they now? I don't know.
Well, it was, it was cast in place concrete.
The way I'm saying, you got the challenges to. Any other, any question, question?
So what happened to the, the sign, the Colfax, like the piece of the cement that had the name in it? Somewhere.
I know, I know. He got it out, and he was happy to get it out in one piece. Well, it is without breaking.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kanzian. Good night, be safe. The next item I have under my presentations is going to sound a bit strange at first. It's the health safety plan, and that's based on a mistake that I had made. I had thought that once the funding was closed, or once we had spent the money, we didn't have to publicly talk about it. And it was, in fact, when everything was closed out. So in twenty twenty-four, I made a public update about the health safety plan. We did review it every six months as required, but I did not mention it publicly. I'm sharing that now, one, because most likely through our federal AARP E S S E R audit, will be noted for doing that incorrectly, and I wanted to make sure that it was on the record that we did talk about it this evening. I would prefer never talking about it again, but if anyone has any questions, we certainly will entertain those questions, or if you'd like to throw anything at me for bringing it up, we can do that as well. All right, so that takes care of the health safety plan. Thank you. Next item I have here deals with our habitually truant student plan. That is in front of all of you. It's a color PowerPoint. I am going to go through, that's the one you have there is the. You want to hold that up for my. Looks like this here. So I'm going to go through this. I'm not going to go through every single slide. I do want to provide some updates for all of you. I did also include this PowerPoint on the public portion of the agenda. So if someone at home wants to look at this, they can download it, they can print it out, they can do it with what they would like. If you recall, in October of two thousand twenty-four, I provided a public update on the district goals for the year, and then in February of two thousand twenty-five, I provided the first public update on our eliminating habitually truancy, habitually truant students. And now I'm providing our third and final public update for this year. You'll see down the very first page there, we have two of our students. That is our empty bowls program. We always like to highlight what our students are doing. I then have the mission statement. I will read that. It's always a good reminder of why we are here. "The mission of the Allegheny Valley School District, a group of small traditional communities, is to educate all students to achieve their maximum potential. A dedicated staff in partnership with school, home, and community will empower students to become responsible and contributing citizens, able to meet challenges in an international society." Now we have our vision statement, and before we get there, I have a picture of our little dribblers. This is something that our new basketball coach has implemented to get younger students interested in the fundamentals of basketball. So there you'll see our little dribblers. "The vision of the Allegheny Valley School District is that all graduates are equipped with the skills necessary to meet with success. Educational opportunities provided to students throughout their educational career will provide the springboard they need to enter the world of work, the armed forces, or fields of higher education." The next slide there, I'm not going to go through and read that. That is the goal that I had originally shared with the board of directors in terms of reducing habitually truant students' numbers. Overview: The plan was created in July of two thousand twenty-four. Most of those ideas were generated from a conference in Washington, D.C. that members of our team attended. Two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, the target population, our students in grades six, seven, eight, and our Dynamo Virtual Academy students. And this specifically focuses on unexcused and excessive absenteeism. The biggest risks that we see is that for K to twelve students, it's, some students, it's becoming cyclically habitual, meaning that these things start very early, and it continues throughout a child's career in the Allegheny Valley School District, and I would go as far as to say many school districts see similar trends, that you have students who become habitually truant, and the cycle persists throughout their career. We want to break that cycle and create a new cycle where they are excited to join us at school. Some of the accomplishments I want to highlight. In August twenty twenty-four, personalized postcards were sent to previously truant students. We had a magistrate meeting on input for the attendance plan. We had student meetings to share why they are not coming to school, and then we started positive reinforcement. Less than three days a quarter, there was a, there was a social with the social worker to recognize kids' efforts in getting to school. Other accomplishments. We now have a buddy program. That is at Acme. There's twenty-one students in that program, and what the principal and Mrs. Vecchio and Dr. Holler have done is they have teamed up our habitually truant students with one of their favorite teachers, and they just have a quick check-in in the morning, telling them that they're glad to be there, see if there's anything that those students need. Not only is it good to address truancy, it's great in terms of establishing relationships. Relationships are fundamental. We also started the Allegheny Family Network Truancy Prevention Program. We've had nine referrals in there. We've also had fifty-four meetings scheduled for our student attendance intervention conference. That means plans we're working through with families to ensure their kids, their children are getting to school. Twenty-one of the fifty-four meetings had families who attended those conferences. So now, the data, I just want to summarize some of this. On the very first one, fifth grade, there are nineteen targeted students. I did make an error with February and March in that there are nine students at risk, not two. So the numbers for February and March are the same, and coincidentally, for each grade level, the numbers for each grade level are different, but February and March are the same for each grade level as we go through this. So you'll see in fifth grade, we had six students that were making progress, four had flatlined, and then we had nine students at risk. This was the first time we saw a negative trend in our data. So with that fifth-grade group, we're seeing a negative trend. The number of at-risk students have increased in February and March. You'll see as we go through the rest of this data, we've either stayed about the same, or things are progressively getting better. In sixth grade. You will see that we are making nice progress, and we are steadily making progress with our students. Again, the number that is the most important is making progress. Those are the blue. Yellow means we flatline, so not good or bad, and then red is the at-risk students. So making nice steady progress with sixth grade. Seventh grade, you'll see that we are, it looks like we're staying about the same in seventh grade. However, I want to point out that in January, February, and March, there are no at-risk students. That's tremendous. Kids get sick, parents have reasons for not bringing their kids to school, and we are able to make sure that excuses were turned in, kids were getting to school. That's a big win for us as a school district, not having any students in that at-risk column in seventh grade for those three months. In eighth grade, we see a positive trend. So eighth grade started out a little bit all over the place, and now eighth grade, habitually truant students, we're seeing more and more students in the making progress level. And that is the last of the targeted grades. So what does all of this mean for us? One, the need for mentoring program at the junior, senior high school level. Mr. Loviski is going to be talking tonight about a schedule change that he's working through with the staff and proposing. We need to have opportunities for kids to work with adults in different capacities. So as part of his sharing this presentation, we're asking you to give any feedback that you made, because we do believe that that's a missing element at the high school, to get that firm mentorship at the junior, senior high. We obviously need to update our plans, and we need to find ways to help students create a new cycle who have been habitually truant. In addition to digging into some of the outliers that we're now seeing, for example, with fifth grade, heading in a downward direction rather than more positive. We believe that more family engagement is absolutely necessary. Messaging about the importance of attending school and following the guidelines and truancy laws, in addition to strengthening relationships, are very important vital relationships to our success. And then if you look at the very last page, it's all about the kids. So you'll see there are three C T C students who were National Technical Honor Society students who were recognized this year as part of it. Questions, comments, concerns, anything about the plan, and I would be remiss if I did not thank Mrs. Vecchio, Dr. Holler, and Ms. Fida. They truly are everything that goes in behind this plan. I want to thank you for all. I want to thank you for all that you do. Any questions, anything I can help anyone with?
Can you go explain a little more about the Allegheny Family Network Truancy Prevention Program and how that works?
If you wouldn't mind, because the...
She's been trying to sneak out a comment down.
It's way everybody. Yeah, that's okay.
Thanks, Doc.
Get a portable mic for this guy.
The network specifically is a county-level program, so we make the referrals to the county once we've gone through our process and procedure with letters, magistrate, meetings that we've had. Ms. Fida makes the referral to the county, and then they have resources to help the families at the home level that we can't necessarily... So we partner with them for those services.
Any other questions for Dr. Holler before we...
No, not Dr. Holler.
All right, thanks, Doc.
The fifth grade that you're talking about, the decline, what was that grade levels statistics when they were in fourth grade?
I do have them, I don't have them readily available, but I can get those to you as early as tomorrow. So we do know, for all the students we have targeted, I see Mrs. Vecchio on our computer, do you have those? Okay, do you mind sharing them?
So the students that are being targeted this year are based on last year's attendance. So it didn't start fresh this year. So we were ready a truancy issue last year. So we're monitoring that and trying to encourage them, and are we able to get to school?
I'm just wondering in fourth grade, if you saw the same pattern, like February and March did the...
That I would have to look up separately, I have totals. But yeah, and we also got hit really hard at the timeframe. We got stripped of the flu, weather will go around. So that may have been a factor, so I'm curious to see if it balances for March.
Unfortunately, we don't have that, but moving ahead next year, we'll be able to take a look at it. It is peculiar.
Yeah, it is. A second question I have is, the DVA, are we seeing truancy in that program also?
We were, so they're actually, what we've noticed specifically, let me Dr. Holler, I'm asking you to come down here, but I might need you. The issue is, most students who are in DVA that we found truancy issues with are waiting until the last week or two to complete all their assignments. So instead of logging in every day and doing a little bit, they're waiting until the end, and they're powering through and finishing up their class. If you don't log in every day, you're absent. And that's what Dr. Holler has been addressing with our DVA students, is making sure that they log in every single day. So to answer your question, where I think you're going is, they are just as accountable for truancy laws and attendance as anyone else here in the school building. That's why it's important that they attend and check in daily. She's had many receptive families, some not so receptive. Overall, how are we doing? I'll just repeat this.
We did well overall. We have... This is for students who run the magistrate from the families. He is not a good person assisting on the important plot against DVA basis. They have to provide excuses from the doctor or parent to assist as well. Same thing, we just pull that into the DVA rather than a DVA basis.
Thank you.
So, and I'll just summarize quickly for people at home, is that we are making progress. Students in DVA that are not attending school, we actually have had them go in front of the magistrate. The magistrate makes his decision at that point in time. And we also have had success with students logging in. The expectation is they log in every single day to their class. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Mrs. Vecchio, and she's going to talk a little bit about the Portrait of a Dynamo. Do we have to pass those off for you?
Good evening, everyone. Just a brief overview on where we are with the Portrait of a Dynamo. It is anticipated to be a three-year process, so this is just an update on the phasing and what we're doing at the moment. So as you know, Phase One started a year ago, when we brought the desire to start the process. And what we wanted to do is start our stakeholder mapping, and that's Phase One. And who should be involved, how is it designed, what is it all about? So we completed Phase One, and then we built an interview focus group, which I think most of you participated in. And we reached out to community members, other target groups, businesses, students, parents, and said, you know, asked interview questions, focused, and synthesized the initial data to kind of focus our questions for our community survey. At that point, Phase Three, we pushed out the community survey, and that was fall, this past fall. And the survey was created based on the stakeholder input from the initial interviews. We tried to engage as many stakeholders as we could through the survey. So towards the end of Phase Three, we collected the information. And if you look at the next slide, it actually says... How many total respondents did we have? We had 205, which doesn't seem like a lot for us, but it actually is. Typically, we get somewhere in the low teens. So 205, we were delighted to have 205 community members, students, parents, and input. And it shows their location and the role that they served. Some people served multiple roles. I did get some clarity, because we questioned two board members. They said whatever role was selected first was included in that total. So you had multiple roles, that was okay. And then we actually really tried to go and talk to the junior high students and the high school students to have their input. And we did get several to actually respond to the surveys. We had 49 AVSD students. It was open to all of them, but a lot of them, we really encouraged them to answer. We actually pushed it on in our email and said, "Go check out the website, click this link, give us some feedback." So that's where we are in our respondent. So from that information, it looked at all the skills and character traits, or as I like to refer to them too, as the most competencies, and said ranking under skills, these were the top rankings, one through 10, and through the characteristic traits, one through 10. So you can see, our district values, our community values, critical thinking and problem solving, they also value hardworking and work ethic. Go very similar hand in hand, communication and integrity and self-sufficiency and responsibility. So a lot of these go very connected. So as we were looking, we put the whole list together to create the competency overview. And you can see a nice deparcation line at number five. We had 124 respondents or more, say, one through five. Hardworking, work ethic, integrity, critical thinking and problem solving, and responsibility were most important. And then we had a significant drop to 93 respondents in collaboration and teamwork, and we moved down from there. So while we've been working with this process, we said, "Okay, that gives us a starting point on what we want our graduate to be walking out the door with. What do they have as far as their character traits, their competencies, to be able to use in the real world?" We're not saying they don't already have those, but we want to make sure that we point these out while we're teaching. We make sure that they're integrated into our lessons, that they're integrated into our culture here at Allegheny Valley. So we are actually just beginning Phase Four, which is the graphic design phase. And the goal is to create a visual representation, putting our priority competencies or priority skills and attributes together. So we started to mock up some designs, we've come up with a couple really interesting ones. We are partnering with the Consortium Public Ed Marketing Department to try to put some designs together that kind of incorporate Allegheny Valley and what we look like and stand for. So we have some mock-up designs here, and this is one that we actually really liked. The verbiage is not exact, please don't think this is the final, this is an example. But we like that it kind of goes from older to younger in the picturing, that we can do, integrate different pictures as we wish. But it also indicates the top five items in random order, what it would look like. We're working on the verbiage to define each one of these for Allegheny Valley right now. And then we are also working on grade band, level language. So what does it sound like for a kindergartner to talk about being hardworking? What does it sound like for being self-sufficient? So we're trying to come up with the language for a kindergartner versus a 12th grader, right? Because it grows as the child grows and matures. So we're working on those grade level bands right now. We actually, at the last staff development day, we met with all the teachers, and we met by the grade level bands, and they started putting the, what I would call the learning target for each of the competencies. "I will be able to," or "we can," you know? So the students are able to also see that language and use that language. So we're getting some nice verbiage put together to try to define these that are student-friendly as well, by their age. So we're working in four and five, both kind of at the same time. The next phase is pending, when we get through this part, and we'll bring that to the board again. And we'll develop the grade band competencies, we're going to work on classroom rubrics, guides for drawing instructional design. So what does it look like when we're talking about it? How does it sound? Where is it built in naturally? But also making sure we point it out, and the students are able to use that information when they're talking as well about themselves. And then also provide a parent resource on what this is all about. All right, that's where we are at this point in time. So we're really between Phase Three, Phase Four, and Phase Five, all kind of happening at the same time right now. All right, Dr. Grace, again, anything you'd like to add?
Just for the board, is there anything that's up for you in terms of the five areas that rose to the top, so to speak, with the surveys? Or anything that was unexpected that maybe you thought would have been there? Or any general impressions that you have about the process thus far?
Excuse me?
Those top five competencies.
Competencies, that's what I call them, you don't have to comment, whatever you want.
Are they going to be incorporated with the subject matter or ident, like con, for programs that we offer?
Yes, we want them built right into our teaching, right into our curriculum, right into our culture. Someone said it at the last education committee, and I think they did a beautiful language, I'm going to steal it from them, "It's part of the Dynamo DNA." So it's who we are. I loved that statement, I was like, "Wow, that's powerful." It was another parent, and they just said it, and it made sense. Like, it's going to be naturally built into what we're doing and who we are as a representative of Allegheny Valley School District. Sure.
What really jumped out to me was hard work, and I really was excited to see that. I've looked at many of these portraits of a graduate. Simple concepts that mean a lot don't appear on a lot of these other types of portraits. I don't know anyone that doesn't value hard work. And I do believe that at times, there's a disconnect. I'm going to sound like my parents, but the younger generation. And what it means to work hard at something, you've got to put the work in. Things just don't happen overnight. And it just, it really stood out to me that the community and stakeholders thought hard work should be a part of it, because it really is something critical for anyone's success. Going through any, either in a relationship you have, or work, or school, things can be difficult, and it takes hard work to do. That really jumped out.
Clarifications. All right, so we're still in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Vecchio. Moving along now, we are going to go into Bills and Payments, which is a placeholder for our voting meetings. And now we are going to have our clean audit champion, Dr. Raj Kapal, Director of Finance and Business. If you would take us through the consent agenda operations and...
Sure. Sure. So along the notes of recognition, I just want to recognize my staff. I work with Mrs. Harpine and Mrs. Jerome. I'm getting choked, but audits are not easy. It's a lot of long hours trying to figure out sometimes what's his point. So, yeah, so I would like to recognize both of them. And we've got a new business office staff, Mrs. Medjoe, who's also assimilated well and is learning the ropes with audits. So just a shout out to all of them, and I thank them. Next is consent item 6.2 and 6.3. That's a placeholder for the minutes of few questions. Please reach out to Mr. Stonian. Next is the Operations and Finance Report. The first, of course, Mr. Mintonberger, he presented. It was a good, clean audit, and we did have a good year for '23, '24, no findings. Next is Capital Projects. Mr. Kansian did present about coal facts. And there's an agenda item related to the delay with the project. It won't cost the district anything though, except for time. Next is High School Projects. That's a presentation next week by Mr. Thompson. And he's got some good news to share with permits that came through, that's a big thing. So he'll share that when he's here next week. Next is just briefly, if for the next meeting, we could just get the attendees for the PSBA conference. Who would like to attend? I think registration opens up next month. Updates, anything with food service, Mr. Donnelly?
I was wondering, I might give you an update on, starting on April 1st, the PD did open up the data collection for having a CEP for next year. So that was a good sign going into next year. I know there were some questions about whether we would have CEP next year or not. They did open up the window, and we are collecting the data, so we're fully anticipating that.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Don.
Okay, next is monitoring with our PESR. We did get money, I'm grateful for that. But they put us through a wrinkle for a week with the auditing and monitoring. But they were very complimentary of the internal controls, the financial portion of that audit. So that was good to hear from them. And that starts with that. Next is the preliminary proposed budget. So if you look at the executive content of the agenda... Sure. Either way, thank you. It looks like this. Okay. Thank you, thank you. So today is April 8th, and things change so fast. So the Finance Committee met on April 1st. Maybe that date was a contender for things to come. But March has changed just in days. So this... So this was supposed to be the proposed budget presentation as close as possible to the final budget. But I had to quickly type in preliminary slash propose because not quite sure. Okay, so next is the mission statement. The budget is built with this in mind. And that's to ensure that all our students have the programs and resources to be successful, which is the gist of our mission statement. A big shout out to Ms. Patrick and her students. This artwork is borrowed from one of them. And so act one, it describes the timeline with the budget. So whatever is involved is items that we've already been through with this process. And so April 8th, we are at the planning meeting and reviewing preliminary proposed numbers. In May, we'll adopt the proposed final budget. And June, there's no choice whether we've got data or money or none. We've got to adopt the final budget at the voting meeting. So from now until then, I'm just asking everybody to be patient. So the projections with revenues, you can see actual numbers for 22, 23 and 23, 24 that the auditor just presented. 24, 25, that's this year's budget. We've still got a couple of months to go. And of course forecasting next year's budget, 25, 26. And in detail, if we go to the next slide, you'll see local revenues compared to this year's budget. A slight increase of 0.4%. And I could only do that based on collections. That percentage I had to increase it because the property values are similar to this current year. So we didn't see an uptick in that. Delinquent taxes again increased that collection based on this year's collections by a slight amount. And this is where I increased it the most last two years. The market's been great. We've got a good fund balance. So we've seen the consequent increase in earnings. And that's the only way I could increase local revenues. The rest of the amounts stayed the same. Some of it is federal pass-through money. So just waiting for guidance and waiting to hear anything at all. Next is state revenues. Basic aid funding, we did see a slight draw. Again, special aid funding, it went up marginally. And things like transportation, bond reimbursements, all of that don't project much increase. Any extra grants, that's for the ready-to-learn program. That's flat funded. Same with state-paid benefits for retirement. That stayed flat too. Federal years where the castle was, do we take it or do we not? Based on a previous experience with budget impasses, it's always good to plug in numbers. If we put zero, then the assumption is we'll be fine without it. So that's why you see numbers, but not quite confident if we get all of it. So that brings us to expenditures and this kept changing only because things are changing also. So at some point you just have to stop and say, we need time. The budget's not past till June, so let's take a stab at projections. As you can see, the bulk of our budget is still towards instruction and support services like guidance, health, library and so on, technology. So the bulk of our budget, if you look at the first two items, the extreme right-hand column, that's close to 90% of our budget. With the non-instructional services, tried to bring that down a little. But again, just this number could go up depending on how things pan out. And of course, the last item, which is 9%, is our debt service, which the auditor showed us earlier. And so these are significant gaps. And it changed from a meeting on April 1st. At this point in time, expenditures, the increase is about 2%. But again, it does not account for any price increases because it's hard to take a stab at where these commodities that the district orders comes from. And so should we add 10%, 25%, you know? So let's just here's where we need to be patient with this because we've got to wait and watch what happens. Same with revenues. We project a slight decrease of 1.6%. And again, it's just watching what happens to the interest rate. Will that kind of slow things down with real estate transfers? All the stuff that goes into local revenues. And so should we take an additional 5% of things slowed down? So that's where it is. We talked earlier, any gaps, we talked about utilizing the fund balance. So these are factors that also influence the budget. So we project a flat enrollment of 900 students. And as of today, we've got 21 pre-K and kindergarten. It's just that it's April. We should see those numbers pick up. But for reporting purposes, we've got 25 new and 20 current pre-K students who will go to kindergarten next year. Other impacts is appeals assessment appeals. Every district in Allegheny County faces this, except for us. It seems like it's a lot more excessive than other districts. That was one of his comments too during the audit. So what does that mean? It means the district may have to give more refunds. So that impacts the budget. And we still have two more months to finish this year. So some of these numbers get adjusted based on our performance this year. Property level, this was a surprise. And it could be attributed to us being a CEP school. I don't know if Mr. Donkey wants to touch base, but parents or families don't need to apply because direct certification is what comes towards the CEP program. In the past, we would look at low-income applications too. But now we get all our direct certs from the campus program. So the district, we were one of 20 across the state. It's a three-year average. So this year, our numbers fell 20%. And it's the lowest number since 2005 with aid ratios. So with aid ratios, it's an inverse relationship. If the number is low, that means you're economically thriving. If your number is high, that means you're an economically challenged district. So it's a dichotomy, you know? It affects, so that's why with the basic education funding, the special education funding, it affected allocations. So it'll affect transportation reimbursements, every item, line item that we get back from the state. So yeah, this is, yeah, it just happened. I think this year we got those numbers. And those numbers come from the census. Census data that's collected, so you can't even challenge it. What we could do, I don't know, is maybe encourage families to fill out those applications. I'm not quite sure, but for this year, we took a hit. Next is state funding. Again, as I said, most of that got affected by the aid ratio. Governor Shapiro is a big proponent of the property tax reduction. So this year as well, we anticipate he'll give a big, he'll allocate his money, the daily money towards a reduction in property taxes for those who are eligible. Also, what's gaining traction is a fixed amount for cyber schools. So that's a welcome relief. I just hope it doesn't get lost in politics. This is something that school districts face. It's a reality. And we've been lobbying for years to just look at that formula and charge districts a flat rate. Because when that funding formula and legislation was put in place, it was back when you had to dial up the modem, I think you remember from last month. So yeah, and if somebody doesn't know what that is, I'm dating that. Okay, next is federal funding. Last week, we heard about school districts having to provide attestations to receive funding. We are waiting for guidance from PD about this. So basically, we've got to affirm that we are in compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. Colleges and higher education institutions had to do this. So we're not quite sure what they want, but whatever they want, we'll just submit that letter because we are in compliance. Healthcare, we, this impacts the budget significantly as well. The rates we got for next year is 5.7%. That could change in terms of open enrollment. That's next month. So we won't get the final numbers. There could be adjustments in June. Next is insurance. We are trying. Our deductible is very high. So in the past, like repairs, anything broke down, we could get claims from insurance. But with high deductibles, we've got to pay out of pocket. That's becoming difficult. So again, capital reserve gets used. It's repairs, you can't anticipate things breaking down, all of it. So that's hitting us as well. Contractual obligations, all our contracts are settled. So that's a good thing. So the budget is more accurate. We don't have estimated salaries. Another thing that impacts the budget is placements. You could have your budget and in the month of September, have three placements at the most expensive school. So that's something it's hard to predict and project. Student enrollment. The only thing I'll bring up here is the possibility of pre-K, that amount being reduced depending on what kind of program we choose to offer based on enrollment. Future capital projects, again, we need to just slow down. We've got a lot on our plate. Let's write this year out before we take on anything new. So and I think that's what the board, that's feedback from the board as well. And last but not least, it's always the economy, stupid. Somebody said that. But yeah, so we just have to write this out. We've got two more months. What seems chaotic now will settle down. You know, the dust has to settle down at some point. So just, just bear with us. And hopefully, you know, June, we've got a balanced, digestible budget. Okay, so fund balance, this is what the auditor, these are numbers that were given. So I won't repeat that. The general fund, these are the assigned numbers. And we've got a portion of it unassigned as well. And we do this at this time of the year. We compare the mileage of our district with neighboring districts. And it's still low compared to Fox Chapel, Deer Lakes, River View, Highlands and Brentwood. I just picked that because they are the same size. Okay, and of course, we also discussed this. So the index is 4%. Last year it was 5.3. So capital projects upcoming with technology, the requests from the budget, the hardware, the Chromebooks, all that good stuff. We'll be dipping into the technology, capital reserve and facilities. We did buy a truck. We placed that order for it, that Kubota. So. Just, we may hold steady with this one. And so capital projects for the up- upcoming year. We always replace two classrooms at the high school that have carpet. We put tile there. Equipment, you know, we just anticipate the various wear and tear. So we just allocate for that. And emergency management hole where it repairs. Or anything of that nature, locks, this is just, you know. Setting aside a little bit as an improvement. The project estimates, as I mentioned earlier, we've got these big projects. Let's focus on it. Get it done and let's not take on anything new. Of course, the parking lot, it's gone out for bin and so we should award that. At the planning meeting. A couple of things that could come up and we anticipate only based on. Where and ten, the boilers at the high school are above forty-five years old. And given the past two years with wear and tear. I'm just like putting it there, out there, because, you know, it's showing signs of aging. And those district wise, this is a project that has been discussed. And there is a placeholder tonight on the agenda as well. Okay, so last but not least, the budget is built again. We want targets to achieve their maximum potential. We, our vision is aligned with student success. So. Yeah, any questions?
I do have a question. You're gonna put them on the agenda for May for us to approve a preliminary budget?
No, no, no. So in May, there's the proposed budget. So we've got to get that approved in May. This month, it's just, we are waiting and seeing. So till probably that first week in May, it's going to take time. For the markets to settle back down and for us to get some inkling. Because when we go out to bed, it's July first. And based on information right now. Couple of months is when prices are projected to go really up. But we can't spend it till you approve the budget in June. So that's where the dilemma is, like wait and see.
Right. I know we had some questions, we board members had some questions about. The budget and I was just wondering, will we see that impact on it?
So, just so everybody knows, the administrators are aware of this. So we've been through finance committee meetings, you know, requisitions were reviewed. That goes into building the budget and they reviewed, we came back to you. You reviewed it, cut items that you felt you didn't need. It came back last week after our meeting. Again, all of you, we looked. So they looked at it like three, four times and we continue to do that till May. Because programs may change too. What if there's no federal funding? Then what?
Yeah, that's gonna be my next question.
If it's like one tenth of what we, so, you know, not that the programs won't be there. But maybe the way we offer it may change. So lot of what else? So just waiting for information and guidance. And but all through that process, we'll keep going back, looking. At individual department building budgets and see what else can we do with that. But they looked at it multiple times. So next month, once numbers hopefully get formed up. You know, you'll get that list back. I think one of you requested it by. Grade level, the request, so you will get that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else with the budget? Again, um, this is like in its right now, I thought it'd be in its. How should I say, a well-formed, well-mocked shape, but looks like it's in its infancy still. So please bear with us patiently as we go through this. Okay, and barring any other questions, let's jump to the regular agenda.
I'm seeing.
Yeah.
So is now a good time to talk about different thoughts and ideas with the capital projects and stuff?
Sure, sure.
All right, because we had talked about this at at some of our meetings and. As you know, I've expressed a lot of concern with the younger grade levels. Especially pre-K and K having tablets and and computers and really the necessity of that. I don't know if, you know, the administration has kind of talked about the possibility of eliminating those. I would like to suggest that we eliminate. Computers, one-to-one devices for pre-K through first grade. If that's feasible for the administration. I mean, I don't see why the kids really need those and how we couldn't do without them. I I shared videos and and information. We know there's more and more information coming out that's showing that. It really might not be the best thing for kids and it was really pushed as a a moneymaker for big tech and and the ed tech industry. And there's just more concern about what is really best for the kids. So if we can push or at least look, break it down and and let's phase out these. You know, in our projects, just phase out pre-K through one, at least minimum. And then I I was thinking if if we could possibly. I think this year we're we're buying computers for two, five, six and nine. Is that what phrase we are? Two, two, five and nine. Would it be possible for this year, only because. We have a lot of capital projects and stuff going on and at least to give this a try. Because we did talk about extending the lifespan of the computers to maybe four years instead of three. So for one year, what if we said, let's not do the purchase for the two, second and sixth grade. Push it to the four years and see how it works out. And, you know, kind of review, you know, curriculum options and and where are we going as a district? Are we moving into more technology and and more curriculum on the computer or are we gonna try to stay? You know, hands-on and textbooks and get these kids reading books and where are we going and and kind of. Give the finances a break there and and decide. I mean, I have, I have big concerns about it. I don't think the kids. Should have it. I don't think the taxpayer particularly wants that. But I don't know, maybe we could get a survey out there. But for now, it's something we could do right now. Get a little bit off of this capital project funding or or technology funding. And, you know, it's not only the cost of the computer, it's the cost of the training and setting them up and. You know, the fixing and the software and everything else. There's so much that goes into using the technology. So I'd like to kind of throw that out there and see if we could look into the to the possibility of that happening and.
I want to make sure I understood what you were saying. I I think, I believe I heard two things. One was for pre-K and K, you'd like to see.
And first grade.
And first grade, see that removed. And for four, five, it's or for two, five and nine.
For two and five.
Waive an additional year to make the purchase.
Just for second and fifth. Let purchase the nine because they're going into high school.
I believe that the purchases for K one and K and pre-K, K and one have already been made. So I don't know if there would be any type of, if you're looking for a cost savings. And we're not going to see it because I believe that those have already been purchased. Pre-K, K, one have been purchased.
If we didn't approve the budget, what does that purchase make for pre-K and K?
Those were purchased last.
And then will they, so is that a yearly purchase for pre-K? Or they're gonna be the ro- they're in the rotation also?
They're in the rotation. I just don't want. There won't be a cost savings. It doesn't mean that we can't go in that direction with pre-K, K, one. I have not had a chance to meet with the grade levels yet and get their input on. But I just didn't want you to think there would be a cost.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure how, if that was actually.
Mrs. Ecker up on that to like do the freeze just for this year because of the expenses. But also in pre-K and K, I would like to see some statistics and data. Showing the success of the pre-K and K having the devices. I'll use the example of pre-K. The students come into pre-K knowing nothing about a tablet. I know that's far-fetched to even think. However, by using that tablet. How much of a percentage increase in their. Academics has that use provided? I know we've gotten into like, well, what are they used for? And teachers were, you know, very good about getting back to us on that. But because they're using that tablet in class, is there an improvement in their academic skills?
That would be challenging because we'd have to have a test group that doesn't get the technology. So right now, everybody has it. So I, we don't have a baseline of who didn't have the technology. I understand what you're saying. Now I'd be curious to find that out as well. Still not quite sure, trying to work through my mind how we might be able to do that.
That would probably be a tough one to find out, but at the same time. What is, can we get a cost, what's the cost in this for the pre-K and K? I mean.
Mr. Main has provided that to us, but but. If we do the pre-K and K. The purchase has already been made this year. But for next year, if we just don't purchase for pre-K and K. Leave those there because they're only two years old. So if they just last their lifetime, which could be five, six, seven years. Don't have the kids in those grades take them home over summer. They're turned in at the end of the year. And then they're reissued again the next year. And this way that keeps that device, you know, in-house with less wear and tear over the summer with it. And then we can evaluate now by them. Well, they would still have them for five years. So we're not, we're not changing anything. They still have the device, but we're not purchasing. And then we hear the argument, they need the the devices in pre-K and K to prepare them for the Chromebook use in the next grades. But a tablet works different than a computer. The way I can maneuver on my iPad is much different than I do on the Chromebook. So I don't see the the argument there that they're learning to do things on the iPad. That they then do on the computer and other than actually playing the game or accessing the the data. But as for keyboarding and things like that, it's it's hard when you start out teaching somebody. You can do it this way with your finger to swipe anything and then go to, oh, wait, you now have a keyboard. And you have to use the keyboard. So like those are things that are factoring into what my thinking is. And again, these are my opinions only. But to to kind of freeze pre-K and K until those devices are no longer. Worth anything. You know, they lived their lifetime and now they're done. So now, do we really need them in the class? Are they valuable to the educational process? Are they fitting in with curriculum? Are they meeting the needs that the the administrators have set, the teachers are working on? And then move on from there. At the end of the, I'm I'm using five years only as a as a number I'm throwing out there. At the end of five years, if we say, you know what, they they probably could do pretty good without. You know, or you know what, we are totally dependent on these devices because, you know, while we're preparing for the next. Class lesson, we're gonna put them on ABC Mouse and the ABC Mouse can teach them for a few minutes while we're getting something ready.
So how do we find out the the need for those? I mean, if they need them and and they're using them and it's an advantage to them, there's no reason to take it away. How do we find out? We can't find out from the students. I think it's more.
Sal, we've talked a lot about 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 that whole thing.
Okay, so if you have. There is a lot of evidence out there that is showing that computer use with children can be. You know, it can be more harmful than it can be helpful. So nobody's arguing. Yes, there, I mean, we've got a mental health crisis going on in this country. And the children are addicted to phones and computer games and all kinds of technology. It's a major problem in the world. So why would we encourage something? That is causing so much issue and there is, there's plenty of evidence out there. You you just need to.
But I'm sure there's plenty of evidence out there that shows that's educational for the kids also.
That's true.
I mean, you you, I I can sit there and not give them that computer and they'll go home and their parents are gonna give them a computer if they're gonna play on.
That's the point, yes.
But what I'm saying is that if it is educational and we know it's educational, why should we deprive that kid of it? And we're, we're not here, we're not here to harm them with it. We're here to educate them with it. So you can sit there and give me all kinds of studies that is harmful, but I can sure and gather a bunch of studies that tell you it is, it's good for them too. I'm just saying, how do we come up?
The point is, we want a happy medium in the school. Nobody's saying that technology is not a good thing and a part of the future. Because we know that it is, but we also know that children are getting addicted to screens.
I apologize, but that's not what you came up here with.
That's because.
Yours is a cost saving measure. So is it a cost saving measure or is it?
It's all of it. It's all of it. It's multifaceted. We're doing something, we're spending money on something that we were thrown into. Why did we even start it using computers? That question was never clearly answered. I can give you some information on it, but the point is, is that we just, it's just take a step back and say. Are we doing what's really best for the kids or are we doing it just because everybody's doing it? This is a million dollar endeavor that we are going into. We've spent a lot of money already. So I'm just saying, when are we, can we just like at least take a step back? Quit dumping money into more where it's not necessarily needed and just say. What do we really, what do we want to do? Where do we want to go? What, where are the important places? Where are the important places? We know kids learn better, most kids learn better with their hands and doing and. You know, they they need playtime, they need those things. If this is a spot where we can. Save money and save our children and make them healthier than and and learn better. Then this would be a great opportunity to to look at that and say. Where do we really want to go? So I'm hoping that the administration can talk to them. You know, that I was hoping they maybe had some of those conversations already, but. I think it's important. I mean, I think it's a very serious thing going on. I mean. Trust me, I've looked at a lot of information and read a lot of things and we've had a lot of discussion. Yes, there's two sides to every story. But every day, there seems to be more and more concern about that. You know, we don't know what kind of screen time they're doing at home. So on, everything's compounded and then we give them a computer and say, go home and do your. Your schoolwork on a computer, where maybe that family doesn't even have, they don't want computer time in their school. And now we're pushing it into their home. That's a big deal to some people.
I'd like to interject, not to debate or really discuss it, but just to posit that there are, I think, what Mister Condy said. Two really different conversations here. The first one is looking just at our budget and what we are gonna prove for the technology budget. Part of which is, yes, that cycle of replacing computers on that three-year cycle, which is something that was proposed. Almost two years ago that the board did approve, not that we can't change our minds on that. And I don't think that that request is unreasonable. I think we still need to get really good information on what was an incredibly well-thought-out plan as to why. We are replacing them every three versus every five. Costs of repairing older computers does go up. You know, the older they are. So I think there, I don't think that's a bad conversation to have, but that is a budget conversation. And is appropriate, you know, in the budget. The other conversation of. The other conversation of eliminating technology at any grade level is, and, and I understand like your sense of urgency on it, but it, it is a huge conversation. You were talking about, even if it did seem like it came up really quickly, a lot of these things were in place before the pandemic. And they have been going on and it impacts our STEAM classes. It impacts our technology classes, I think, pre-K to 12. It's a huge conversation that absolutely has to involve teachers much further than the level that we, you know, we've gotten a couple of anecdotal things, get a really good write-up on that was given to the education committee of like the math teachers and how they use it. It, it really would be like a cultural shift. And I can't tell you as a teacher, how many cultural shifts I have lived through in 20 years that are often handed down to us by school boards and administrators who do not consult teachers at all when making those decisions. So it's something that like, I think that you don't even consult just those classroom teachers, but quite frankly, the union as a whole, because it is such a school-wide cultural shift. If you're going to eliminate even for a couple of grade levels, whether that's right or wrong and all those things, I think that it impacts staffing. It would impact our technology staffing, which we are, you know, looking at tonight as well. Because obviously if you get rid of devices, do you need?
That's right. That's actually part of the budgeting part of it.
Which I would think getting rid of the couple of grade levels probably wouldn't impact it that much. But it, it is such a huge conversation. Like, I don't think that's one that we could make a major decision on or decide by June, like, or for this coming school year. So I just think that that, you know, moving towards a school that is, you know, phone-free or tech-free or less tech or whatever, it's just a larger conversation that I think has to include all state schools.
That's why this year I was prepared. We're not, we're not eliminating any grade level. Basically, I'm looking at it budget-wise, you know? Can we save money one, for one year? You know, like, don't, don't buy these and then continue with pre-K and K to just hold off buying them, you know, and let them use them, you know? And, and, you know, the teachers are showing us, they, they see value, but is the value worth the price? You know, I don't put any price tag on teaching my kids, you know, things. But, you know, I think there comes a time like, let's just look. You know, let's slow down a little bit, let's pull back a little bit and then move forward. Like, you know, just hold it this year and move on.
Yeah. And I was going to say, you know, and, and part of our conversation too was the need for, for vamping of libraries, the libraries in both of the schools. And, you know, why don't we, for these lower grades, possibly go back to a computer lab for them? And, you know, not to keep it away from them completely, but they don't need a computer to be taking home with them every single night. And, you know, whatever, right? Have the conversation, let's get the conversation started and just see what is best for our students. I don't run it really, I mean, you can talk about the union, whatever, but I want to know what's best for our students in our, in this school.
And I think freezing, like, hold them back for a year. We'll give that whole year to have all these discussions.
I mean, this is new. This is all new. There's no.
Include the teachers, the librarians, since that's going to be an area we're looking at. You know, with, you know, is it better to have pre-K and K in the tablets? Or would a, a computer lab work for them? I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
You know, I would like to know what our professionals think, what our administration thinks. So in that one year's time, it gives us that year to, to research all of this.
That would be next year because we've already purchased the one. We weren't going to purchase new items.
In the, the pre-K to kindergarten, first grade. You're not going to make an impact here in the budget, but you, you would make an impact on the, the older one by extending it a year. The other aspect of it is that, you know, again, that's, you know, identifying the need there. When do we typically purchase the computer equipment? And that would be usually in the, near the end of the year for the following year, correct?
Oh, this is.
So the, this purchase that we're talking about, we have time to have discussions with the administration and our staff, which I think is the important discussions they have on how they feel that would be an impact. Whether or not we want to direct them for next year to say, hey, even though we have computers, we don't want to use them or we want to minimize them. You have it, well, I'm talking about the younger ones. That we have time to have those discussions. And we take that, you know, through the curriculum committee, you know, direct the administration, they can start doing the research and saying, hey, is it really a positive impact, something that's really improving us? Other than, you know, the traditional teaching that we're all familiar with, you know, us old folks here. But, I mean, there's advantage, I mean, I was on the board when we first were moving into technology and that's what it was. We were like, hey, this would be great to get one-to-one across the board. You know, at that time, we were thinking that, you know, it's, we just didn't want to replace blackboards. But, you know, it had to be something that was going to improve it. But, you know, with the focus on doing that and the drive of the large companies to say, sell their product, move their product, get them across the board. You know, did we overlook the fact that, you know, what, what's actually going on in society with the, the time? I mean, I think I mentioned before, like, you know, you go to the restaurant and you sit down and you look around with families with kids. And it's quieter because they're all doing, you know, flipping on phones. Matter of fact, half the parents and adults are on the phones. There's not, the conversations aren't going on. So there is an impact. We have to start deciding, you know, what are the positives and negatives that are happening in the school? And to what level? Because at some point, we do have to have these kids understand technology. And like I said, with, with they, I come in even more so, it's, it's going to get, you know, crazier. So I think it's a discussion that we need to have as far as the curriculum side, direct the administration to say, hey, I, I, you know, I'm not sure the approach we need to take on it, but it's something that we have to look at. If something is in the budget, it doesn't mean we have to spend it. You know, we do have time to say, you know, that we don't feel this is, you know, going to be effective. Now, the five and six, is that?
The second and, second and fifth grade would be coming up. So if we could hold off on the second grade purchase.
An impact to the budget. And again, we want the feedback on how that would be. Because again, I don't know the challenges or issues we have with the technology. And if it is, you know, as they get older, they, you have more problems with them. We're actually looking at putting our staff, support staff to get through those tickets that we've seen. I mean, that's what the intent was on the change in the, in the support structure anyhow. So I would think that we're well positioned to support them in any of that type of problems that may come up.
How often are the preschool and kindergarten, their computers changed? I mean, how often do they, how long do they use them? The same computers?
What's the cycle for replacing pre-K one and two tablets?
Looking at four years, possibly five.
And pre-K, does it change, is it all tablets, pre-K through kindergarten or first grade? All tablets? Second grade.
So we purchase new ones this past year and we may not purchase them for several more years again.
And, and again, you know, the discussion there is how to use them efficiently and, you know, and minimize that impact. But again, I think that's a direct, we get the administration to say, we want more information there. From a budget point of view, we'll have to decide whether or not pushing that out a year is something that we feel is appropriate or not. Again, I don't know the exact impact of that, but we need to know that. I am in the process of setting up meetings with each of the primary grade levels to have a different type of conversation. So this came out of our finance committee. The teachers have been talking about and shared with the principals and different administrators what they're using the technology for. My question will be more in line with, are there ways to reduce that that would work? They might, I don't know what their opinion is. We haven't had those types of conversations. Keep in mind also that, you know, I was a teacher at one point. I believe I still understand how most teachers think. And it is, one, if I say I'm not using this, does that mean I'm doing something bad? Or someone going to view me negatively? Or does it mean that, you know, if we say yes to this, are we going to eliminate computers in second grade? And then third grade, and then fourth grade, and then fifth grade? Just trying to share with you the thinking that goes through a, a teacher's mind. It's, it's not as simple as the content that, that's in front of us. So there's a lot going through their heads. But I'd like to have the conversation with them just about how much time do you think kids should be on a laptop or an iPad during the day? Are you, are you exceeding that amount of time? Are you using it to fill time? Is it used for tests? Are there apps that the kids have to use? If there are, how do we go about getting those materials and replacing them? So those were all the things I want to start talking them about. So please be patient. We will get to the information. I like Paul's idea of, you know, is the technology in these primary grades making an impact or not? Here, it would be very difficult to find, but if we could figure that out, that'd be really cool to see if it's making much of a difference or not.
I think one more piece just to add is that it's not just programs that they use or games or lessons or learning. We have to give students assessments. And I, I know it sounds terrible, but we, like, literally are mandated to do it, to give local assessments as a Title I school and just for all of the requirements that we have as young as pre-K and K. And, you know, it's interesting because we talk about the technology piece and then we want, we want kids, you know, writing more and doing more by pencil and paper. Then when we look at the budget, we look how much the workbooks cost, then we crumble about those costs. If we move away from Acadiance and these other programs that we use assessments for, which we have to do to assess their learning, you know, for MTSS for so many different reasons, we then need to find paper replacements for those assessments, which not only do you have to do, now you are adding time to the teachers because it isn't going into a computer system that is automatically spitting out these reports and everything that we use for MTSS. They're probably more expensive, frankly, if they're paper. So there, there are multiple needs. It's not just for learning and intervention, but that's that assessment piece that those are and that we do use for our intervention programs for our special education students. So again, like, that's why it's just such a much bigger picture than budgets and just money. It, and just like their use of it as like a learning tool. But like, we have, and we have been given a lot of information about the assessments that we have to give those students, whether we like that or not or agree with it or not, I, you know, personally kind of hate it. But we do have to do it and we do learn from that data. We've seen those MTSS meetings where those reports are given. And those are all tests that those students take online. And so, you know.
You know, part of the depth, Dr. Grasik is talking about getting us.
I don't think Mary Ellen was worried about, speaking of the budget of what it costs, it's what it's doing to the kids.
I'm speaking of both. I, I'm talking about both because it's a, you know, it's concerning on both sides. And if we're doing something that is, you know, not truly helping the kids in, you know, some ways, then why would we spend money on it if it's going to be, you know, we just don't want to overdo it is, is the point. So if we can start them out without it and then push them in it and save a million dollars, then we should do it, is my point. But no, there, I mean, and like I said, this is all, this is new. We've never, we've never gone into computers like and taught like we are now. Look, there's schools out there that don't use computers at all. They test, those children test. How do they do that? How do other places go through educating children and, and they are so successful and not use computers? And get all their testing done? We've done it before, so. But yes, it is about getting the conversation started. And how can it save us money and how can it improve our children's academics? So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, seven point two. That's the flexible instruction day. We just need, we do this on an annual basis. And actually, this is the year we've got to apply for the days as well. Item seven point three to seven point six, the district out to bid. The first is the asphalt paving for the student parking lot at the high school. District-wide garbage collection and also the athletic custodial and general supply. And last but not least, the copier services, we went out for bid. So the board will see the vendor who got those contract. Next week, seven point seven. This is to get networking equipment from martial auditorium to the athletic facilities. And so basically extending the Wi-Fi coverage. And the total project cost is not to exceed 7,500. Next is athletic trainer. We did find a company we can work with and they'll provide services based on fixed hours. And so we, this has been reviewed by a solicitor. And we'd like to proceed in this round for 25, 26. If any hours unused for a month, we can carry it over for the next one. Any other questions, please reach out to Mrs. Noah. Next, seven point nine and seven point 10. They relate to technology services. And if you've got questions, this has been reviewed through various committees. And if you've got questions, please reach out to Mr. May. Item seven point 11 through 13, that relates to student services. Any questions, please reach out to Dr. Hall. Earlier, there was an item which was an agreement for parking. You'll see that at the voting meeting. We just needed to get the agreement back, so we took it off the agenda. Seven point 14, that's the extension for the Colfax demolition project. We anticipate a completion date of June 6th. And there's no additional cost. Next is purchase of doors. There is a need for about five or six doors. So you'll see additional language being added after we consult and get information from Mr. Zangrilli. Last but not least, this is the flashing light project. We need some engineering work outside at me to make that happen. So, and this has been reviewed by a solicitor. And that's the finance and operations report.
Dr. Rashd, would it be appropriate on seven point 16 to add verbiage that it's a speed limit sign? Or speed limit light or, I don't know, I just wasn't sure if like.
Of the agreement.
Yeah, and that's fine if, if we want to be, you know, that's fine, however you want. I was just wondering like, for clarity, people might wonder what kind of flash is behind.
Flashing schools on.
Yeah, school zone or speed limit or something. Not even like in the motion, but just in the title of the, of the motion or something. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Doc. Let's move on to item number eight. We do have, our administrative team has some information to share through presentations this evening. And I just want to touch on those briefly. We are looking to share with, we want to share with you more quantitative data. So you can see the progress we're making or the lack thereof in English language arts and in mathematics. And additionally, at the junior senior high school, I know that at our last meeting, Mr. Plino and some others were talking about the possibility of a middle school type model at the junior scene high. While that conversation was going on, Mr. Loviski had last year started committee meetings to change the schedule at the high school. High schools, if you remember, are very regimented by belts. You have X amount of time and that's it. There is a trend in public schools to create, you can call it whatever time you want. But some schools will call it what I need time, some will call it intervention and enrichment time. He's looking to create blocks of time so that if kids need assistance, it's there throughout the course of the day. And this is a new idea. And this is a new idea. So he shared it with the staff today. It was one of a couple of models that they have. He's working through this with the team. So what he's sharing with you is his proposal. It could most likely change, but what will not change is we'd need to make a change at the high school with our schedule. We are stuck in a bell system that is very antiquated, does not allow for flexibility. An example of that would be if I was an elementary teacher and I needed 20 minutes to work with my class, I would go next door and say, Mr. Plino, can I hold the kids an extra 20 minutes? And it would be a no brainer. They'd work it out between them. When bells are ringing and bodies are moving, those types of conversations are difficult and not only, well, you can't do it. So he's trying to work through a way to do that. Teachers are providing input. He has information. He's going to share on that today. And in addition, we've noticed some gaps as kids are coming in the seventh grade. I'm not saying it has, it's an issue with sixth grade. A curriculum type gap where kids are coming in with some deficiencies that we want them to bolster themselves in with math and language arts. And he has an idea that he's going to propose as well. This does not require any type of vote. What it does require is any creativity, innovation or ideas to help improve what the idea is and the flexibility to live that this might change before the start of the school year. But if we don't start talking about it now, I can assure you, nothing will happen. Um, so this is a way for us moving in that direction. And I don't know if he was to go first or not. I certainly don't want to screw up your. Are you okay with that, Ms. Sucker?
Sure.
Okay. You go however you want to take it however you like. I can help pass those out if you need it. Mr. Loviski, don't wait for me. If you're ready, go for it.
So I have two different items I want to talk about. I want to talk about schedule of the schools as second. First thing to talk about is English language arts. The document that you have in front of you, I, I didn't want to inundate you with full bunch of stuff. So I created kind of a script on page here. Kind of highlight two particular classes. First off, it would be really, I guess I need to slide over.
Or if Mr. Plino yells at me, uh, you know, I, I think something that board members don't get to see, parents don't get to see is being inside a classroom and what actually happens in the classroom because it isn't, uh, it's not something that you readily get to see. So looking at, uh, obviously our kids are going to be taking state assessments and ELA, mathematics, science. Uh, our Keystone exams in biology, literature, algebra one. So there's a lot of tests that our kids are taking. But focusing tonight on English, language arts, uh, you'll see the documents, uh, broken down into three areas. So what have we done and what are we doing? We've been collecting data in seventh grade, eighth grade and 10th, 10th grade English that focuses on specific assessment anchors of vocabulary conventions and key ideas and details. So that sounds very wordy and like, what the heck does that mean? Okay. Uh, what have we observed? Uh, overall, what we've noticed is we're seeing some improvement uh, across all grades in our anchors. And I want to highlight and talk about two specific classrooms. And I want to talk, and, and you're going to see the number four and the number six, and you're going to say, well, that's not very much. Well, actually that's about seven percent of our students, uh, in, in a grade level when you start looking at it and breaking it down when we only have 65 kids in a grade. So I want to show you first, highlight one, a middle school classroom. Over the last six weeks, four students have increased their performance, uh, looking at vocabulary as a, as a key area. And in talking with the teachers, and I was actually in a classroom yesterday to observe when they were working through, uh, this data collection and this piece. And, and something that they remarked and that you noticed is, uh, teachers spending some time reviewing the skill, walking through modeling for them, how to complete the question, and then we're seeing some success with the kids and improvement. And that might sound silly, but that's very, uh, it's sort of like, uh, practicing what you're going to play the speed of the game. Uh, so that's something I wanted to share with you. That strategy of modeling really is working with the kids and we're seeing an increase. Highlight two is going to be a 10th grade classroom. Uh, six of students have increased their proficiency over, uh, the past six weeks. And again, the same thing I had said, we're taking small bites and we're practicing and working upon skills that they're going to be tested upon. And you're going to see, you have a document, another document with you. And I wanted to show it to you because this is what, an example of what our kids are going to see on the literature Keystone as 10th graders. But something that has been valuable, uh, in talking with that teacher was the idea of working through the kids, you know, I'd mentioned modeling, but working through, talking about pre-reading strategies, you know, what are you going to do when you get this? So the passage you see, this is an actual passage that a student received on the PSS or the Keystone exam. Uh, this was released in 2024. So these were actual questions off a state assessment. And what the teacher did is talked about, all right, what are you going to do when you see this passage? How are you going to approach it? And we've seen that an increase of six students doing better as we've worked through taking small bites and doing sort of small batting practice. You know, I like baseball, those of you who know me, uh, if you go, Paul Skeens got hit around tonight, by the way, any baseball fans, he gave up five rounds, I think. But the point is if you're not practicing at the same, uh, pitch speed that you're going to see in a game, you might be going over the, the anchors and what you're going to see on the test, but you have to practice. And not saying that every day you're taking questions that look like a state assessment, but if kids don't see it, you know, they might struggle. Uh, so that's something that, that we have been working on as a group. Uh, if you look down to the final point, these are sort of some takeaways. Uh, which I think are very important to highlight for you, you know, where will this lead us as we continue to look at it? Uh, to continue to focus on assessment and the types of questions we're asking our kids. Obviously you're going to do fun projects in school and things that are interesting, but you still have to practice the way that you're going to play. Uh, and I think that makes sense. Uh, you know, we have to continue to collect data and be more intentional about how we're going to use it and what does it tell us? Uh, we need to continue to focus on providing additional academic supports for our kids. And that's going to transition into what I'm going to talk about in a few minutes. So it's a nice segue. And then lastly, uh, what we hope to see is improved student achievement. And just based upon what I shared with you before, numbers look small when you only have 65 kids in a class. But when you have anywhere from four to seven students improving, that number you see at the end of the, end of the year is, is going to be higher. And that's, that's something like you, you see like, ah, it's only four or five kids that are improving continuously. It's actually a lot, uh, in a small place. And that doesn't mean there's kids that aren't already achieving. These are kids that were not meeting proficiency and that are improving. And that's at the end of the day, what we want to see. Anything that you would like me to add, Dr. Grasik or, or?
So you, you're doing the practice with the whole class, right? So I, I don't, I don't need to be like a wise guy.
You can be.
So if, um, if you're doing, taking small weekly focused practice at targeted skills, what were you doing before?
Well, if you weren't doing that. That is a great question. That was absolutely happening before, but it's going back and picking out skills that we need to continue to work on and giving quick hits. So it's already happening, you know, reading a novel. They're working on these types of skills. The questions might not look the same. This is kind of cold practice, if you will. Uh, so that kids are prepared. I mean, it's no different, the sports analogy that I give. You know, I could go into the batting cage with my son and throw batting practice and throw it light. He can still work on the mechanics of hitting, which we're doing, but bringing it up to game speed and practicing what the kids eventually are going to see is an important skill for them to have as well.
Okay. So you're, through your assessments, you're seeing where, where the trouble spots are, then you're targeting them that you're going back through. Gotcha. Okay.
That's a great question. That's a great question. May I transition to number two? All right. So. I'm going to turn it. So looking at, at schedule, and we've talked about this with the high school staff. Uh, we started talking about looking at making some changes to schedule, uh, in 2019 and then 2020 happened and we got away from it. Last year, we spent time meeting in committee, looking at, you know, how could we create, uh, some time within our schedule for our kids? Uh, so that they could have access to the people that are most important to them in school, their teachers, uh, in their content areas. How could we provide that support? So if we look at what changes, and I apologize everyone, I know it's, it's late already, but it's going to take a little bit to walk through this. Two schedule adjustments that we are looking to make at the senior high school. So you have the PowerPoint that is in front of you. You also have, just to orient you to the papers that came out to you, two bell schedules. One is titled the regular bell schedule. The other one's titled Dynamo Bell Schedule. You should see those in front of you. So what we are going to suggest to do is to have a regular bell schedule, uh, which I'm going to pull up just for everyone to be able to see. And that regular bell schedule, right now we have a section of time in the bell schedule that is allotted for announcements. Every day, Mrs. Dale sends out to everyone, all of our announcements for the building. So we do not have announcements that are running live. So what we've done is we've cut that out of the schedule and added some minutes of time instructionally to each class. And that's what you'll see, uh, on the regular bell schedule. So the next schedule that you're going to see is the Dynamo Bell Schedule. And I'm going to get into what I'm talking about here. But what we are suggesting to do is one day a week, running an alternate bell schedule. It might be called the Dynamo Bell Dynamo Day Schedule. I put that out to the staff. What would they want to call it? Maybe you guys have and ladies have an interesting idea, but what that schedule is going to do, as you see it up on the board, uh, is create a 30 minute block of time, uh, and it is in the morning. We looked at three different iterations of the bell schedule. This captures the most amount of kids because as you know, in a seven through 12 building, we're not just a middle school. We have kids that are going to Forbes Road CTC. This allows us to capture almost all of our students and provide all of our students and hear the word that I'm saying, all of our students had opportunity to have access to their teachers, to make up work. And a multitude of other, other resources that they would need. I mean, if you think just as an example about pottery with Ms. Patrick. You know, pottery doesn't happen in 20 minute class. It's something that takes some time. So she might have kids that go to her for some extra help. Maybe we run inter murals. There's a whole multitude of different ideas about which we came up with. But the key being we need to provide our kids access to their teachers, whether they need reteaching, uh, they need to take a test. They need additional help in mathematics, English, science, whatever it may be, but we wanted to create a dedicated time within the schedule. I know there are folks in here who are parents, who maybe have kids in different schools. Uh, this is just a personal anecdote, but I know for the Loviski kids, having a time like this built into their schedule in high school and middle school is incredibly valuable for them as they're active and they're working, uh, going to school. So this isn't like a new concept. I don't know many schools that don't have a time period built into their schedules so that kids have access to their teachers. So here is. Here is what we are proposing to do. So if you think about the month, uh, each week, we would have a different building wide focus. So in week one, all of our students would participate. Uh, so if it was Wednesday of the week that we decided to run this schedule, the alternate bell schedule would participate in an activity across the entire building. Ms. Gibbons is going to be the lead on coming up, what those lessons would be, but doing something across the entire building. Get our teachers working with our kids. Week two, you're going to notice it says academic and post-secondary. Uh, week three, you're going to notice it says academic, week four, academic and career. For the academic and post-secondary, I'm going to, uh, go to the next slide because I have provided you with some specific examples of what would occur in each of those weeks. So with Rachel's challenges, I said, building wide activities for the academic focus, targeted assistance, intervention for our kids, make up work, our counselors can run groups, testing quizzes, uh, reteaching, retesting. There's just a multitude of different activities that could occur, but the most important piece to simplify it, it gets our teachers with our kids. And that's everybody in the building would have kids with them. It's about 15 kids, 12 to 15 kids a classroom. That's not a lot. The career and post-secondary, uh, we divide that into grade levels. So we are thinking 10 through 12 and seven, eight and nine. Right now we do our career speaker series with just our middle school kids. Like to open that up and give our high school kids that opportunity as well. We can bring in our colleges at that time. So kids aren't missing class time for college visits. Uh, we have like art therapy, for example, that could go on at that time. So it isn't detracting from education time. It's creating a time in the day where those things can happen. Uh, so that is, gives it some, I, I gave the example this afternoon. Uh, I'm a terrible bowler. I'm not good at it. Maybe we bowling I was good at, but you know, I'd prefer to have the bumpers up. So this is giving us some bumpers and some guide rails as we work to provide our kids access to their teachers and provide them some support. I'll stop there with the first before I go to the second. Is there any feedback, questions, thoughts, uh, that you may have on the first proposed change? Mrs. Moretti, go ahead. You couldn't not ask something.
Right. Um, for the academic, so they only get that offering once a month.
Three times a month.
Three times a week?
Three times a month, they would have access to their teacher. We're, we're suggesting to start doing this once a week. So, uh, in weeks two, three and four, they would have access to their teachers for academic focus.
Okay. So who's going to monitor this Dynamo period? Because our teachers have a contract.
Yeah.
So since their teaching load is six periods per day, how are we going to now have every one of them do a Dynamo period?
Yeah, that's, that's the challenge that we face. Um, we can say, well, there's a contract on, I'm going to get around it. Or we can say our kids deserve better. Let's find a way to make it work. Um, and that is the, that is one of the points we really don't have an answer for right now. We do believe that this is heading in a better direction than staying where we've been.
Oh, I, I agree. You know, I'm all for more student help, but I'm just concerned because, you know, it is a union with the contract and, um, you know, I, I know our teachers are very lenient and they, they do what we ask, you know, and they do a good job at it, but we don't want to step on anything.
Sometimes you need to. Um, and Mr. Loviski also, um, added at the end of his meeting today with the teachers, he asked them for feedback. So, you know, we're also looking for, you know, to be a part of the solution. This may not be the schedule we end up with. We believe and are confident that the more time our kids spend with their teachers, building relationships, the more successful they'll be. We also have had a fluctuation of test scores. This is a way to address those. It's also a way to address some of the, um, anti-bullying, anti-violence programs that we have. I do agree with you. We have to work with the game. We don't, can't work around them.
Another question is about the truancy. You know, we've heard that some kids are coming in late because they really don't like their first period class or aren't getting anything out of it. So if I know on Wednesday, the first week, I'm going to have to participate in an SEL class and I don't want to do that, maybe I won't go to school that day.
I don't know that I can answer about a specific kid. I appreciate, I appreciate your feedback. I, I just don't know that I have an answer for that.
And then Forbes Road, you know, we have those kids that leave around 10:30 ish. Is that going to affect this at all? 9:30.
There's going to be a small group of kids that, there is nothing that we can do that's perfect that gets every single kid. This schedule is the only one that gets the majority of our students. It's, it's an impossibility being a seven through 12 building.
And the assistant principal is going to set what they're going to do, the focus of the week?
For Rachel's challenges.
Oh, just for Rachel's challenge.
Yes. So. Oops, sorry.
My kids also have this time where they go to school and that time is set up for specifically for academics first. So if I'm struggling in my algebra class, I can go to my algebra teacher and I have time during today to get help for what I need. There are many school districts that have this type of schedule, five days a week. So that, that time is built in. We don't have study halls. Um, and we don't have them, which is how we've operated. This offers a way to address that at least one day a week and then to build on this. Maybe the teachers look at this and say, there's no way it's going to work. Okay, that's valuable information. Maybe they figure out a way to make it even better. Having that opportunity to really hone in and go to places where you need the help during the day gives us the ability to say. gives us the ability to say, Mr. Loviski, you're not doing very well in your algebra class. I need you to come work with me during our intervention time or our Dynamo time. That makes a lot of difference. And by way of example, Mr. Loviski was sharing, and Gina, you may have driven the activity bus. There aren't a lot of kids that stay after school for the activities. We offer tutoring and supports after school. We're not getting a lot of kids that go to that. The thinking, so our thinking is when they're here, let's get them while they're here and we have the people that we need and we entrust with their heart. Um, so that's, that's the concept behind it.
I guess my question, are you done?
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I had, her first question was my exact same first question. I was like, wait a second. Um, and maybe my questions are like going to be really conceptual and like, we don't have to answer them in this moment. It can answer them at another time, but like when I, and maybe you're also going to go into like these academic times, like you've mentioned, like, okay, like the algebra teacher saying, okay, Johnny, you've got to come see me like, how, like, what are the logistics of this period? Like, how do you know where all the students have to go? And like, what if like forty kids go to algebra? Like, what are all the, are all the teachers engaged?
So it's one of the reasons that, that a couple, two years ago that we purchased Smart Pass was under this mindset of creating a schedule with some flexibility because through Smart Pass you can pre-schedule. So uh, say, for example, I need Ms. Sarno to come to my classroom to work on English Language Arts. I could send her a pass and have her come to my room. It wouldn't be a free for all where kids just go wherever they want. Uh, we would set it up in the master schedule that everyone has a place that they go. So if it's week one and I don't know what day of school we start, but it's that first, say the second full week of school, kids would have, everybody would have a place to go. And then we'd work from there in that uh, and I've done this before. I've done it at another school where we've done this and we actually use Google Sheets uh in order to do it. We have a tool that we use for our pass that does it for us too. You can actually, I could set up a pass for you to come to my classroom and it pops up on your computer.
Yeah, and I guess too also thing that like all teachers would be, I guess, equally engaged during that time. Um, I guess I'd want to see like more examples of how that would function. And then I guess my other thought is like, and yeah, I, I appreciate what you said, Dr. Grace, about this being a starting place, starting with once a week. You know, like, because at the elementary level, we have IE time every day. Yeah, so we do have IE as the intervention enrichment or win or whatever. So yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering if you look at like, does it make sense to have like, I don't know, just a slightly longer school day and slightly longer periods? Or like, like, do we look at the whole master schedule and like, are there issues? Like, we're saying we're not able to fit in like this intervention timer certain things, like, does the whole master schedule need to be looked at? Rather than like changing it up like this one day a week? Like, I, I don't know. I guess I'm having a hard time visualizing it. But I don't know. I don't want to interrupt you further. I'm just struggling with thinking about it.
Kind of on the same line though. Have you ever thought of um or tried having fewer classes per day? But like the block scheduling, like have, you know, longer periods so that you can really get into some in-depth learning and without, you know, there's not as much um go leaving class and, and moving from class to class. You have more in-depth study time with four classes a day.
Last year, a block, uh Forbes complicates that as well. That, that throws a wrench in the system as well because, and, and now Forbes not offering academics also throws another wrench in the system in that, you know, kids are having to get those academic classes back at home. So that's one we had looked at, uh but did not figure out a way to make that happen.
Last twenty-five years have been about block scheduling and just never have been able to.
I was gonna say, I had it twenty-five years ago. You had block scheduling.
The concept is really what we're working. We're like, how do we create that time where there isn't any time? And how do you account for the kids? Those are all questions that he's getting. And also, uh, Mr. Loviski didn't mention is that he's going to pick a few times periodically this year to run this schedule. So that we're learning before we go day one and see what suggestions come about.
My last question is just then, you mentioned you presented this to teachers today. Was there like, who all worked on this? Was there like a team of teachers?
We spent about two months last year doing this.
Last year?
And then I convened a, a group of, smaller group of folks this year. You know, after talking with Dr. Grace, we need to do something different. We had done all the groundwork, uh so it's time to make a change.
Are you able to, if you can't right now, but like moving forward, you'd be able to, maybe after we've tested it out as well, like summarize what the main concerns are that teachers have or the main praises that they have for it? Or would I be interested to hear like what their um thoughts are on this? For sure.
They're even pushing that up to period one. And then a student that doesn't need or want to participate in any of this, they don't come in till later.
You'd be surprised when I go, we hit a different day.
You know what? Today, you can sleep in till ten o'clock.
If that would incentivize a lot more of that, I, I would think that would be a negative impact because don't have, those that want to, want the help are going to reach out anyhow. And it's, you're kind of like incentivizing them to see, oh, this could kick back, so I don't have to be there.
Yeah, I'm thinking those that really need help, maybe they would push themselves more to get to school. But, you know, scheduling is very hard. I'm going to speak from experience. It is very, very hard. And that's why the regular bell schedule is so antiquated.
We have, we have people with five and six, they're teaching five and six different courses at the senior high school, junior, senior high. That's a fact because we're small. Uh, most people are teaching more than one grade level and that tends, you know, I have a math teacher who teaches calc AB, calc BC, trig, calc, and then a seventh grade class. I mean, you talk about the, uh, a very day, uh, it is. And it's what makes us special and unique too, to be a seven through twelve building because I think there's only a hundred of them across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Which may also pose a problem, like Mrs. Sarno was saying. If you're that teacher that teaches the five different subjects on Dynamo Day, which one do you pick?
And there are going to be things like Dr. Grasik said, with any change that you make, you're going to have to figure some things out as you go and make some changes and adjustments. And that's, I think, what educators do well is they're nimble and make changes. I think that's part of what, what we've always had to do.
I think you climb uphill and then sometimes get pushed back down.
You, you mentioned the, the contract and the union uh issues that will arise from that. How, how do you plan on proceeding forward? Uh, and the, the challenges there?
We met with um some teachers today. We asked them for their feedback. They, they gave us some areas that they were concerned about. Simply said, well, can we get together? Actually said, sit down, let's talk about it. Is there a way to make it work? I, I don't know. But I, I, I am confident that if we keep stuck in our bell schedule, we're going to have more difficulty trying to help our students that need extra help. So that is, we can't violate contracts.
Right.
So, yeah, we have to work together. And I don't know how that will work out. Maybe we ask if we can try it for a year. But after a year, we make a decision on what we want to do. I don't want us to move backwards. I want us to at least be trying things that are different, that get us moving in a, a different type of direction of working with our kids. Right now, we just need your ideas. If something seems off or doesn't seem right, that helps. Um, Mr. Loviski is getting information from the teachers. Um, just keep asking questions.
It's creative. Thank you.
All right, number two. Number two, uh, as we look, one of the things I know Mrs. Moretti, as an example, has brought this up a number of classes to the schedule, which I completely agree with. As we look at our offerings, uh, Google Suite and Career Exploration is one of our nine-week rotations in seventh grade. And I'm going to explain what we're going to suggest that we do, but it really is a duplication. I mean, many of the kids coming from Macmatonia have, they're, they're using the, the Google Suite platform and are familiar with it. We have career standards intertwined into everything that we're doing. So what we're suggesting to do uh as a proposal is to eliminate that for next year, which would free up Andrew Sangeras' two sections of his schedule, which would allow us to have two additional electives at the nine through twelve level. We have, I think, as of last look, uh sixteen kids who have signed up for Intro to Business, which we haven't offered. Our goal would be to offer that in that place. Uh, and then we would have uh two staff members with an intervention period with seventh graders. So imagine the seventh grader split into four. Uh, they would work with that group of kids every day for forty-five days, working on math and English intervention. That's, that would look like instead of the Google Suites course. Looking forward to the future for twenty-six, twenty-seven, because I think it's our job to think further down the road as well. Uh, in addition to being able to offer Intro to Business, we've had accounting in our uh program studies and been able to offer it. It doesn't fit. We don't have a place in the schedule or someone to teach it. By freeing up Andrew from one of those electives, it allows us to beef up our business program. So in twenty-six, twenty-seven, what I envision seeing happen is offering accounting again and/or another to be developed business course. So whether it be like uh sports, entertainment, marketing, a finance course, something different to give our kids more choices at the senior high level. So that, that's the number two schedule adjustment that, that, that I am proposing tonight. I think it makes a lot of sense when you look at, uh, you know, when Google uh Suites became a course, we were very new to using the Google platform across the district. And now, I mean, I had a kid today in the library show me how to do something that I did not know how to do. Uh, so we have to continue to evolve and change and assess what we're doing. But one of the, the, the tough points when you get down to, and Ms. Moretti knows this, when you're scheduling kids, there's only so many options and places to put them. And this would give us two other places uh to go in the master schedule.
Um, love it. Same question though about the math and English intervention period, like contractually then? Does that give those teachers an additional period or just a longer period?
It's uh the same length period of a normal day. It's not adding anything else to their schedule. There's no contractual issue there. It would just be what they're teaching that period.
Okay.
So is that going to change the look of our math interventionist in, uh, I'm sorry, it's getting late. Like what they do, like they wouldn't be pulling students necessarily or anything like that there? That is a dedicated period for them?
The math interventionist would be a part of that period.
Right. That's what I mean.
Yeah, it creates more, more structure for them.
Yeah.
Because there's a designated spot for it.
Right. Yeah, I like that.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Loviski. You don't look very sorry.
The, it would actually give the math interventionist the ability to interact with every single student for at least forty-five days throughout the school year, which does not happen now. So he mostly works with just targeted students. This would give him the opportunity to work with every single kid for forty-five days throughout the school. So moving on from that one, this is just a little review and an update on what's been going on with the math interventionalist and um also, I just wanted to bring up something with online state testing. So during the first semester, he was working with kids who were, were going to be taking, retaking the Keystone Algebra One. Uh, he worked with thirty-two students. Uh, one of them reached proficiency and fifteen of those thirty-two students increased their scores from the first time that they took it. The second semester, he's been focusing on the, uh, kids will be taking the test in the spring. So seventh, eighth grade PSAs and then the Algebra One Keystone. He's working with thirty-seven students. He keeps track of all of the data. Um, he kind of gives them a pre-test based on whatever course that they're in. And then he works from that. He does pull them and it's always from some type of elective or one of the rotations for the younger kids. Uh, one day a week in small groups, anywhere from two to five kids, and work specifically on targeting skills where they are in need. And he does pre and post for every single one of those chosen topics. So he's always collecting data uh every, every single day. Every single student that he's been working with has either improved or stayed the same in every topic he's been working with them. So all the data we're getting back from him is, it's working. It's working. And hopefully this, I mean, it helps them in the classroom. It's not just when they're with him. Because if they're improving on these skills outside of the classroom with him, that hopefully carries over into the classroom. And then ultimately the state testing, which is where it's reflected across the state and where everybody can see it, when they don't see the good stuff that's going on in the classroom. Now, this third part here, the targeted formative assessment. That was some things that, uh, similar to what Mr. Loviski was talking about, where he looked at a few specific classrooms. Many of these things we're talking about, they're going on in all of the classrooms throughout the school. I mean, we've been talking about learning targets and success criteria and how we can use formative assessment in every classroom every day. It gives you real-time feedback. And how using that every day will let not only the teacher know if the students are successful in whatever it is they're learning, but also the student themselves before they walk out of there. Uh, Mr. Lauer is in push-in uh to a course with Ms. Yaksic and also Ms. Petracca. So there are three of them in there. And he, we've been keeping track. Exit tickets are one of the examples I'm using. So if they're learning solving two-step equations. And at the end of class, you give them one question. So it might take literally three minutes. They do it on paper or computer, whichever they choose to do. Um, and that will let the teachers know, do they understand it or not? And literally is keeping track of it with a yes or no. And that's like the first day they learn it. So that isn't just to keep track of the data, but it's also used to drive instruction in the classroom. If they do something and say there's twenty kids in the class and only five of them understood at the end of the day, then that informs all three of them and teachers in all the other classrooms in the school. Okay, well, I need to do something about this. The next day, we can't just move on. We need to touch on this again. We need to, you know, in this particular class where there are three teachers, we know how we can group these kids now. The ones that already got it, they'll be with this teacher, maybe doing a little bit more enrichment style. The ones who had absolutely no idea, they might go, you know, to separate classroom. So it, it helps drive the instruction that's going on every day. And then for the post-data for that is when they get to the end of the unit test, there'll either be the same exact question they gave a week or two ago or one very, very similar to it. And then he does the same thing, looks at that question, looks off yes or no. And so far, at least fifty percent of the students who did not get it the first time around on the day they learned it, at least fifty percent of them are getting it and reaching proficiency when they take the end of unit exam. So that's giving us really good feedback. Um, and if these things are going on in all the classrooms, then I'm confident that there are similar results going on. And this is just one specific one that we're targeting. And then also the constructed response questions, which they see on all the state testing. And we're trying to get teachers to include more of them on actual summit of assessments, use them in their classroom as well. So the first time they're, you know, working on isn't when they're taking the state assessment. They've been keeping track of these also in that particular class, Ms. Yaksic's, uh, it's an eighth grade, uh, pre-algebra class. And when he does the pre and post with those, they've done three sets of them so far since December. And the students are improving. It was like zero point nine. So we'll say like one point per question on average. And these are only four-point questions. So it's like twelve total, twelve total points on the, you know, the PSSA. So if they improve one on each, they're going to improve from an average of three point five out of twelve to six point five out of twelve in, you know, the best hopes of, of this. So that's pretty significant. We're hoping this will carry over. Now, the last part um brings in the technology piece with also what's going on with state testing. So next year, all PSSA tests in all courses in all grades and all of Keystone exams will all be online. So this year, um, the choice was made to do all Keystone exams online and the science as well. So Mr. Lauer, Mr. Belak, who teaches all the Algebra One courses and myself, went to a workshop in January called Mastering Online Mathematics Tools for PSSA and Keystone Success. It was focused on math because there were so many different tools, calculators, equation writers and things in math. But it's offered for every single subject for science and ELI as well. So we went to that. We got to go through, we have access now to a, if you want to call it a practice test. The math one has like fifteen questions. You can go through it, which we did. We spent half a day, all of us going through it, practicing ourselves as if we were students. So um, you know, in equation builder, there's online calculators, there's highlighting tools, things that things that kids aren't used to doing on the computer. You know, they're used to taking these tests where they can write right in the booklets, you know? And now they're going to have to learn how to transfer that and put it onto the computer. And that's going to be mandatory starting next year. So we don't have a choice. And the best way we thought do this was learn as much administrators and teachers as we could now so that we can help the students practice now for whenever it becomes a reality for all of them. And then on the March Professional Development Day, I had three different sessions so that I could get with the elementary teachers and then two different sets of the high school teachers. I gave them access to this so that they have, then their students also have access to it, went through some of the tools with them. And I know that, uh, it was like scheduled for like an hour and a half. We maybe went through twenty minutes with me, and then they spent the rest of the time basically just playing around in it. And I know talking to a few of the science teachers and the math teachers, they are do using these as practice tests with their students. They're projecting the problem one right up there on their board. And all the kids will, it's the same exact test for everybody. So they're looking at the same question, number one, and they're going through and showing them these tools and how to use them correctly and effectively. So when it does come time to do these online, it's not something brand-new to them, and they've had some practice. And that's, like I said, it's it's a cross-all, but I didn't do this just for math teachers. We also did it for science and also did it for, um, ELA. Because it, they do look a little bit different when they're on the computer versus being on, you know, paper, where you can just look back and forth from page to page. So it's good for not only the students, but for the teachers to see it too. So I don't think we have any questions on anything I have there.
Thank you very much. That was one of the best presentations I have sat here and heard.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Ask Mr. Loviski, that's a lot coming from me.
Well, that's why I asked if I'd go next, because a while of what I said built right off what he, what he was talking about. You know, like targeting the classrooms specifically so we can give you some quantitative data. But this stuff is happening in all the classrooms, the formative assessment, things like that. But asking every single teacher to do this, you know, it's a lot easier when we have a math interventionist who can keep track of that, you know? So.
All, all the statistics and to be able to explain that, I mean, my head was probably distracted.
So it made sense. I did try to like not get too crazy into like crazy numbers and all that kind of stuff. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As you know, uh, the administrative team, uh, does, uh, classroom walkthroughs as well as, uh, teacher observations. In addition, we are following, uh, two or three teachers with interventions that are happening within the classroom. What I've been following this year are two teachers, one third grade and one fourth grade. And the intervention model I'm looking at is our spring math. As you know, uh, I think Ms. Vecchio made some presentations a while back talking about the importance of our students knowing and being fluent in facts. Time and time again, I see our students understanding concepts in mathematics. But what's holding them up when they get into two, three-step problem-solving is their facts are not fluid. They get held up on just simple facts. Sometimes they're, they're hard facts. But then, once they get caught up in something like that, then those two-step problems, those three-step problems begin to, begin to be harder because they can't move forward because of, uh, facts. So that's why we looked into this, uh, spring math. And, uh, we heard a lot of good things, and we're seeing a lot of good things. Some things that, uh, I, when I sit down with the teachers and talk to them about the data that we collect, recently, uh, our third-grade teacher said that, uh, they are definitely seeing more confidence from our students using this, uh, program. And, uh, they're confident in their facts, fact fluency right now. In the past, uh, our third graders had a hard time doing, uh, third-grade problems, uh, quickly. Now with, now with this program, uh, the, what are they seeing is more complicated third-grade problems being done and being done correctly. The multi-step, uh, problem solve, as, as I mentioned, those two-step operations are becoming easy because now they know their, know their facts and are able to go through each step and understand the problem. With, with this, with this model too, what the teachers are able to do is differentiate with, look, the lower-skilled students in that classroom as well as, uh, the students that are doing well in, in the math classes. One thing that is doing is changing the mindset in mathematics. That's one big thing that we're working on with, with our students. They're seeing success, so the mindset of, I don't like math, is kind of changing. They're seeing success. And this program also has a peer learning, uh, component to it, which is, uh, they're working with a peer to, to, to do well on their facts, but also it's a classroom support system for students moving forward. Let me just give you some, uh, information on what our students need to know through the standards in regard to facts. In first grade, they have, they're representing and solving problems involving addition, subtraction within twenty. Second grade, they should be able to represent and solve problems involving addition and subtraction within one hundred. Third grade, they should be representing and solving, uh, and, and being involved in multiplication and division. So right now, you know, we, we're seeing students coming into third grade to understand that. But also, they understand the concept, but they don't know their facts. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier on, this, uh, program, then, uh, how we, how we look at this to make sure it's successful is, in spring math, more than half of your stu-, half of your class has to, has to meet the criteria for you to move forward. And, uh, this teacher is showing, uh, every, every week we get data and, uh, showing improvement in all, all the students, uh, through that class to move forward. Those students that are, are not moving forward continue to take that level of practice. But then they are put on something called extra math, where it's more individual-based, and they're practicing on what, what their weaknesses are. So the math we're looking at when, when they're taking these, uh, interventions, a single-digit, single-digit, uh, multiplication, single-digit, uh, addition, subtraction, that then they get into double-digit multiplication, double-digit, and that's where you start caring and so forth and, and making sure that they know that process, which is, could be a difficult one. So I'm happy what I'm seeing in third grade. In fourth grade, I'm following a teacher, and, uh, she listed some things. There's target, targeted, uh, mastery target areas we look at to make sure the teachers are, these students are meeting that criteria, then they can move forward. She, she, uh, we sat down and we looked at period, uh, each period she, she teaches. And, um, uh, these periods also have, uh, different learning abilities. So the period one, they're right now in multiplication, and they met the, they met the, uh, targeted interventions with multiplication from zero to twelve. Uh, so the class is succeeding and, and moving forward. Then we have second grade, it's really, really focusing on subtraction. Subtraction was hard for them from zero to nine, but they are meeting, uh, the median, and they're moving forward. Third grade, they're looking at subtraction now with three-digit with or without regrouping. So this, 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 uh, class is doing some, uh, hard individual work in, in regards to subtraction. And they're moving forward, again, using the same system, spring math. And then the fourth grade, now they're, now they're multiplying by two-digit and three-digit, uh, digits. And with, it's with, with, with regrouping and without regrouping. So we are, uh, when I talk with the teachers on there, they're both, they're both saying that the consistent practice is important, and that's what this program, uh, entails. They're able to find effective interventions when they begin, uh, looking at what the students are missing and why they're studying, why they're missing it. Again, if it's frequent progress monitoring. So when you have frequent progress monitoring, the teacher then can pivot in her instruction and, or his instruction and, and, uh, teach the students in real time and what they do know and what they don't know. The whole important part of this is being consistent, uh, to what, what they're exposed of. And then they're able to, uh, automatic recall, uh, when they see these mass facts. And that's what I'm looking for when I go in these, in these classrooms. So again, uh, very happy for what we're seeing right now. Again, we're getting data every week. Ms. Vecchio, myself, Dr. Haller also look at that data, and, uh, we talk with the teachers on how they're going to move forward. So, so.
Questions for Mr. Havel?
I do have one. Does this spring math focus more on memorization than procedure?
It is, it is instant recall some of, so some of that is. But how they know now, what, with the instant recall part of it, the, uh, two-step problem-solving problems, you have to see if they really know math from the caring, the bartering that they do. So it's, it's important to have that recall to move forward on those multi-step processes. But, uh, through that extra math, you're able to see if they understand.
Yeah.
The content.
Okay. Thank you. So now that you've got that going in third grade, have you been able to look back into first and second and say, where, where were the gaps there that caused this thing?
We are working on that.
The next year for K one, two, uh, especially with that tactile component, we've kind of lost the faith in, uh, moving forward from, especially with the pandemic. Then we can see some gaps. Yes.
So what I'm doing now, Ms. Eckert, I, I sat down with the, the, the third-grade teachers, and I had them tell me what gaps they've been seeing the last two, three years. So we do have a list of those. Then I go down to the second grade, and we see what gaps they're, they're seeing from coming into first grade, come from first grade into second. So we're going to get together cross-grade level, uh, meetings somewhere down the road, once we get this data, and then have these, uh, teachers talk to one another.
We're seeing again that the hands-on tactile approach to learning in the lower grades is very helpful to help them to know their facts and to, and to move on.
That's definitely part of it. Yes.
Yeah. I have another question, but I forget what it was. Getting tired.
Hang in there.
Great to hear. Great to hear.
Thank you.
We have our three-year special education plan review that is due in May. Copy of the draft. If you want to peruse through it, let me know if you have any comments, feedback, suggestions. Our main focus for the upcoming audit by the state for next spring. Uh, we just completed the Indicator thirteen transition audit with the AIU this spring, and we have our five-year audit coming up next year. So this plan gets us through the next couple of months. Focuses on professional development for transition, verbal de-escalation, legal and law, um, parameters for what's coming up for the audit. So take a look at it. Lots of information. And if you have questions or feedback, please let me know.
That's it? What?
Thanks, Dr. Hall.
For review is new curriculum. It says new course curricula, but it's actually new. It's actually written curricula for multimedia seven, multimedia eight, and we have child development curriculum. We are going to put a hold on the child curriculum development. Reverse that. Child development curriculum. Um, I have a call into the state to get some clarification on the updated standards that were released last month. All right. So that's the only update I have for you this evening. Ms. Eckert, would you like to do the board report?
I have a question about the curriculum that you're going to keep reviewing. Are you also going to review all the resources that were listed?
Yes. I actually pulled the original curriculum that was written in two thousand and sixteen as well with all the resources. We did have a copy of that from Dr. Newsa, so I also have that as a cross-reference as well.
I like the format that he used.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you for approving it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vecchio.
Okay. So I guess I don't really need to read eight point two again, right? So it'll just be to recommend, um, the board would approve the new course curricula for multimedia seven and multimedia eight will be on, right, for next week. I do have a few things you want me to wait until next week to read?
Go for it.
All right. So we have, um, congratulations to Ms. Baradon's fifth-grade classroom that collected over one hundred cans for the food, cans of food for the Lower Valley Food Bank. All classrooms in the building participated in the food drive contest. The class with the most items won a pizza party with the KSWA wrestlers. Acmatonia Elementary students who were selected as the winners of the spring musical coloring contest are Gemma Tolento in Ms. DePalma's room, Nolan Kern in Ms. Sostaniak's room, Shakira Ledbetter in Ms. DeSal's room. The High School History Club, with fifty students from the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grades, had a successful trip to Baltimore where they visited Fort McHenry and toured the historic ships in Baltimore's Inner Harbor. A great time was had by all. Uh, as a cross-grade approach to building community character and academic development, students and staff take part in the Acmatonia Elementary Schoolhouse system. The students and staff are divided among houses. Each month, houses meet with various community-building activities, meet for various community-building activities. Each house earns points through athletic contests, academic success, artistic endeavor, team spirit, or attendance. The program has been a great way to build a positive community environment at Acmatonia Elementary. Veteran and Allegheny Valley School District employee, Mr. Bill Vargo, visited Mr. Connor Green's history class at the high school. Mr. Vargo is an annual guest in several classrooms throughout the district, talking with students about life as a minor in Western Pennsylvania and his time in the military. The students look forward to seeing him and listening to his stories. So thank you, Mr. Vargo. And some, uh, dates for spring testing will begin with the PSSA for grades three through eight. Let's see. We have English Language Arts for seventh and eighth grade. Is, is that for third grade also?
Three through eight.
Three through eight, okay. English Language Arts will be April twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth. Math will be April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And fifth and eighth grade will be doing science testing on May first and second. Advanced placement tests for biology will be May fifth, chemistry, May sixth, English literature and composition, May seventh, US history, May ninth, calculus, A, B, and B C, May twelfth, um, and environmental science, May thirteenth, physics one, May sixteenth. The Keystone exams, uh, literature will be May twelfth and thirteenth, algebra, May fourteenth and fifteenth, biology, May sixteenth and nineteenth. Any questions, um, about the exam or to review, to review it or opt-out, you can call the main office. Parents. The junior, senior high school biology and chemistry clubs have been busy planting for their upcoming plant sale in May. The sale is open for staff and students first with a public sale to follow. The profits will be used to purchase supplies to continue the planting program in the future. And I just wanted to say we had a great meeting, um, with the Education Committee on the nineteenth, and Mrs. Vecchio had shared some great information, which was gone over tonight, with the Portrait of a Dynamo and the attendance issues and, um, other topics of discussion and thoughts. For further improvement included, um, parent education and engagement and, um, talk about how to reach out and talk about, you know, the, the concerns with screen time and sleep and parent involvement and how it's so key to, to have that, uh, for academic success and how to, um, reach out to them. Um, and a little bit of talk about school libraries and how maybe we could improve them and maybe get computers involved there somehow. But lots of, lots of conversation to be had. And that was it. That's it. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Eckert.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to item number nine, technology. Ms. Moretti, uh, Ms. Paulovich is joining us online. You, do you have anything at all under technology?
I do.
Oh, you have.
Do you have it?
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah.
Just, I don't know, do you mind?
Yeah, not at all. These won't be long. Um, so just there are, like, a couple items are spread out. We had the item about the agreement with Brightwise to fill the position of instructional. to fill the position of instructional support technician. That's the finale of the multi-year effort to restructure the technology department as presented. The cost of the district depends on the salary of the position. Salary is decided on by the district. And then you'll notice under personnel this evening that there is a reading of a job description for instructional support technician. And just to clarify that it's not, it is a new position, but it is going to be replacing a contract that we have, I always forget what it's called.
CCL.
CCL, I always want to say CDL. In our restructuring, we're actually reducing costs and reducing costs of the overall technology department, but that's part of it. And then I just, like, I was just kind of digging up, you know, when all these conversations, which have gone back for two years, so it took a little while to, like, find it all in my email here. But, you know, we've discussed it, like, in the technology department the last couple of years, the structure, you know, not only the restructuring of the staffing and the issues, but also the device cycle. And I did find this list of information that, like, just some reminders to put out there, because I think it is so many figures, and it does get lost. But for the next four, possibly five years, the cost of new one-to-one devices is $55,000 a year. It would take 13 years for that one-to-one program to total 1 million. Devices, again, for pre-K, K, and first, will not require replacement until 2028 or possibly 2029. So, we are not spending any more money on those three-grade devices until 28 or 29. So, just some other things to think about, like, you know, as we go further, but just, there was a lot of rationale put into, like, what that cycle was, and we can share this out with the whole board. Also, keep in mind as well, it's like, we're going to be voting on the flexible instruction day plan. Were we to eliminate any grade levels, we would have to change that plan. We would not qualify for a fit plan if we weren't offering the one-to-one devices. And just, like, overall, the biggest thing that we got out of our very, very long technology meeting that we had last month, thank you, Ms. Main, was that the technology budget is down 30%. It's the lowest value in five-plus years, going back to 1819. That's the oldest one we could find. Just for perspective, the entire 25, 26 budget in technology costs less than a single HVAC AC unit in the gymnasium. Just throw that up there, that's all we have for technology.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ms. Sarno. Let's move on to personnel, Ms. Haas.
I put a call everybody at 4:30 tomorrow morning. Tonight's agenda includes recommendations for the district ESY summer program. These positions were approved previously, and are now being filled with recommended candidates. Second item is two summer students, two student summer workers are recommended. The rate was $10 an hour last year, and the administration is asking the board to consider increasing it to $12. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. Are you okay if I go through the reminder of the items?
Sure.
Item 10.2, leave of absence. Employee number 1492 is taking FMLA. Item 10.3, employment of classified staff. Larry Nagy, custodian, starting salary $15.80 an hour, effective April 7, 2025. And this is a ratified. Item 10.4, employment of athletic staff. We have two volunteers for, one for softball, one for boys soccer, James Chase Jr. and Sean Abraham. 10.5, extended school year, ESY staff. We have Candy Connor, Olivia Fida, Jerry Clark, Lisa Bucelli, Jody Gamble, and Larissa Zerot. Under 10.6, we have a resignation. Lisa Medbad is resigning from the bus aid position, effective March 22nd. We're just commemorating that. Item 10.7, employment of technology department summer workers. This is the item that Ms. Haas had shared. Mr. Main did advertise these positions in the hallways, on the monitors, and he also sent a mass email out to the students in grades 7 through 12, or was it 9 through 12? Advertising the positions. So, we have Craig Varga and Landon Underwood, 20 hours per week, $12 per hour. Again, it is a change from $10 an hour last year to $12 an hour this year. Pay increase, this is to recommend the board increase for cafeteria lunch aids and bus monitors to $11 an hour, effective April 15, 2025. Under item 10.9, job description first reading. This is for the instructional support technician that Ms. Sarno had mentioned previously, and this will be filled by Brightwise. Any questions?
I do have a question for the tech student increase in salary. I don't feel I have enough information, nor had time to discuss with my fellow board members on that increase. So, I don't know if I feel prepared to vote on that on next week, so. I don't know what to do about that. I mean, I don't know if I'm the only one, but we're only increasing cafeteria to $11, and we're going to give students $12, so. I know that's not a, that's an executive session discussion, however, I just wanted to bring that up.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
On that?
What's up?
Just on making it's welcome.
Do they have a regular schedule? Do they work, like, how do they work?
The students, Mr. Main sets their schedule for them. They do not exceed 20 hours during the week.
I guess my thought is that it's a temporary position for how many weeks? Six weeks?
A little over a month.
You know, first is something that's ongoing for a long time. It has to, there has to be an incentive for them to do it. I mean, $11.
Were they promised the $12, or were they just, they don't know anything about it?
We're recommending the 12, it is at the board's discretion. If you want to keep it at 10, or come somewhere in between, it's your discretion.
We didn't have a problem at 10, so.
So, you're concerned more about the aides?
Well, I'm just thinking, I didn't, I didn't see the cafeteria increase when I was, you know, looking at different things. And the tech student I saw for Mr. Main's tech report, to increase that to $12, but then I did see the cafeteria is going to $11. So, I think we're increasing that $1, but the tech student is getting a $2. You know, I realize the difference in the hours being worked and the money spent. However, the, we didn't have a problem with the two students that did it for the past two years doing it at $10 an hour. And I'm going to assume that the students that put in on the advertisement were thinking they were getting $10 and did put in interest. So, is there, why raise it to 12? Again, I apologize if I'm stepping out of executive session discussion.
We're only talking, this isn't, we're not talking about the personnel. I believe it's fine. Is there a number that you feel more comfortable with, Ms. Moretti?
The $10, I think, was a fair amount to present to students.
We'll leave it at 12 for now. We'll land on a number between now and next Tuesday. Unless the board wants me to change it to 10, in which case I'll do it right now for the voting meeting agenda.
I'd like more time to think about it. That's okay. Thank you, though, Mrs. Moretti.
Thank you, Ms. Sarno.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to emergency management. We have Ms. Sarno.
No full report, just a comment that the emergency management team presented, the committee presented tonight during exec session about costs associated with safety upgrades.
Thank you. Item 12, athletics and student activities. Mrs. Rinaldi, do you have anything?
I have no report. Does you have anything? No.
How about the play? Wasn't that an activity?
Oh, my gosh.
That was good. They need recognition.
It was amazing. It was so amazing.
I thank you for bringing that up. It was absolutely incredible.
Yeah.
That was one of the best musicals our school was put on.
Yeah, agreed.
And the number of participants. It was amazing, the kids working up in the booth, to the stage crew, to the performers.
Yeah.
Absolutely exceptional.
I think it's really a testament to investing in the staff that we've invested in, because I think those people make those connections with those students, and so you see them coming back, not only year after year, but also inviting other friends to be part of it. And how lucky are we that so many of those kids were not seniors? Many of the stage crew were, but we will get to see these students keep performing. I think the money that we spent on the technology for the auditorium, if you went pre-mics, and you went to shows post-mics, the stage management, the lighting, huge kudos to Mr. Main. But, I mean, the students were just absolutely amazing. I was truly blown away, and wish I had gone to two performances. Just huge kudos to, like, all the staff and the volunteers, our huge parent volunteer team for that, and our amazing, they put so much work into it, it was extremely impressive.
And kudos to Mr. Martel and his mom, and the whole crew, you know, it's a, he does an exceptional job pulling all the kids together, all the parents that are involved. The students' performances were absolutely wonderful. At one point, I saw the very first Princess Fiona, and I was like, wow, she's really good. And then the second Princess Fiona came on, I was like, she's really good. Ari came on, who was the final Princess Fiona, I was like, oh, my gosh, like, what's going to be brought out of that?
Well, I'd like to point out that our first, and I'm sharing this because it was in the program, but our first Princess Fiona is one of our EFL students. She was a newcomer to FHS this year from Turkmenistan. So, I've had the pleasure of getting to know her through my EFL observations. So, for her to have that part, I think, was just huge. And then the role of, and I'm going to say Natalie, I think I'm, I think I'm saying the wrong name, the young lady who played the dragon, Naomi, and it was an N, also a newcomer to our district this year, and getting so involved, and what a powerhouse. It was just, I don't know, it was really special. It was just really special.
Congratulations. Policy Legislative Affairs, Ms. Moretti.
The policy committee met two weeks ago, and I did send a report on that to be included in the minutes then. There's only two policies up for first reading, and those both have to deal with the safety and security, the end arts, school police officer. And that's in compliance, to be compliant with all the latest legislation that's been out there and case files and things like that, so. Please take time to read them. Mrs. Sustaniak does attach them.
There's also the curriculum one attached. Yeah, there's one with, like, updates about the curriculum, which are things we had discussed before, but I don't, I didn't know that we were.
Oh, yeah, there is one about curriculum, and thank you, Ms. Sarno. We had talked as a board about changing the, there was no policy that directed if a school board member wanted to review curriculum. So, the long discussion that, you know, we did have as a board, you know, we went back to committee and we talked about it, and we did, in that policy, you'll see, there's a section that is copied directly from the Policy 105.1. 105, I'm going to get that mixed up, and it's like, okay, it doesn't matter. But the one deals with parent review is copied into that Policy 105. And then there was just some language, there was some comparisons with other districts, and there may be like a word or two that might be changed, things of that nature. But the biggest portion was the board reviewing the curriculum.
I have questions and concerns about it, but I would rather wait to either ask for clarification from you throughout the week, and then bring up for discussion next year, due to.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
That's okay with everyone.
And that's the end of policy legislative, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moretti. At this time, I'll turn things back over to our president, Mr. Plant. Thank you. At this time, any other board discussion items that I'd like to bring up?
Time is breakfast?
4:30. Trying to break the record here. Seeing no discussions, we'll open the floor to any audience, comments or concerns on any items.
Oh, what a stinker.
All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, and I'll second.
You have a second, all in favor? Thank you very much for attending.